I'm gonna record it too, just for giggles. Have a backup.
My email.
Oh, you get your drop box.
Thank you for my drop box.
Oh, you ready? Everybody ready? All right. All right, good evening. I'm gonna go ahead and call the Centerton City Council meeting order for January tenth, twenty twenty-three. And then, uh. Okay, sorry. So would everybody in attendance, please stand with me and join me in a pledge of allegiance. Everybody remain standing and Amy, will you lead us in preparation?
Our dear heavenly father, we're very grateful that we can gather together here as a city. We're grateful for the amenities that we have. We're grateful for our city employees and our city citizens. We're grateful that everybody is very passionate about our community. Father, we ask that thou, thy spirit, may be with us today, that we may be able to make good decisions. We pray for the best leadership that we can give, and we pray that we may be able to listen to those who have concerns. In this, we pray for, in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Hey, Todd's not here, so Nicole is gonna be taking minutes for us. And with that, oh, will you do a roll call, please?
Amy Rosette.
Here.
Justin Cowgar. Peggy Botham.
Here.
Josie Reed. Warren.
Misty, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, she's here. She'll zoom. She's with us. You here? You there, right? All right, so our next order of business is swearing in three council members uh who were just recently reelected, and their terms started first this year. So with Josie, Amy, and Justin, please stand. And I'm gonna administer the oath of office. So if you all raise your hand, repeat after me where I say my name, you say yours. I, Bill Edwards.
I, Justin.
You solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
I reaffirm.
I reaffirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
The United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Arkansas.
Constitution of the State of Arkansas.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Alderman, Spatier Ward. Two, three, one, and both are position two, city of Centerton. About to enter.
John about my.
Congratulations. Teal, will this give me these form back?
That's longer than a marriage, you bring up.
Oh, I swear it off.
Cheaper too.
What, cheaper? All right, also. Thank you. Thank you. So at the first meeting of every year, uh we do have to state some ground rules in the meeting. So uh basically organizations, government body. Uh so the members of a government body elected for each city or town shall annually in January, assemble and organize a government body. Majority of the whole member, the whole number of members of a government body constitutes a quorum for the transaction of business. You always had to have a quorum here. At least we had to have at least three members. And then the mayor can make the fourth member. Okay? Uh these jud- those judgments are not subject to veto by the mayor. The government body shall determine the rules of its proceedings and keep a journal of its proceedings. It shall be open to the inspection and examination of any city that has basically minutes. Um the government body should may also compel the attendance of absent members in such a manner and under such penalty as prescribed. Um the government body may consider passing the rules on the following subjects. The agendas of meetings, which is always posted. Uh and then uh citizen commentary. You know, we do have public hearing or public comments on our agenda. One thing I did at this meeting that we haven't done in the past is I've moved public comment up. So public comment will now be after department reports. And I moved that up, so if there's something on here that you wanna, you know, the council to hear from you uh before they take action, because this is a business meeting in the council. And if you want them to hear any comments or concerns you have before they vote, or on any subject, uh that will be limited to three minutes. And I'll have a timer here if anybody wants to speak. Uh also, when we get into voting on on ordinances, resolutions, if you vote no, please state a reason why you don't know. Right, that we're there, developer, citizen, whoever has, you know, knows why you're voting no. Uh in a mayor council form of government, which that's what we are, the mayor shall be the ex officiating president of the city council and preside at all its meetings. The mayor shall have a vote to establish a quorum at the city council at any regular special meeting. And when his or vote is needed to pass an ordinance, by law, resolution, order, or motion. In the absence of the mayor, city council shall elect a president pro tem to preside over the council meeting. If the mayor is unable to perform the duties of office or cannot attend uh one of the following individuals may perform all functions of a mayor during the disability or absence of the mayor. City clerk. Another elected official of the city designated by the mayor. Or an elected employee or resident of the city if designated by the mayor and approved by the city council. Uh the terms governing body means a city council, the mayor council form of government. So anyway, we have to read this at uh beginning of each each year, so. Council, you got any questions on that? Okay. All right, so next uh on the agenda is approval of the city council meeting minutes from December fifth and then December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two. And they are in your drop box, they've been in it for about three weeks. Make a motion.
What's the intention we're looking at?
Uh council for December fifth and December thirtieth, regular council meeting.
Make that motion.
Okay, we got a motion from Amy. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Anyone opposed? Uh someone can make a motion to acknowledge receipt of the Center and Water and Sewer Commission meeting minutes from November twenty-second and the Planning Commission meeting minutes from December sixth.
So moved.
You got a motion? Do we have a second? Any, any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Anyone opposed? All right, next is the financial uh statement for December twenty twenty-two. I'll go over that. He's provided to you some documents.
Move it in, everybody. Over the month of December, we had in the general fund, we had a seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollar shortfall. Reasons for that are, we had uh the annual holiday pay, and that's for the police on fire of ninety-two thousand. And some additional grant expense, fifty-nine thousand. We paid the twenty twenty-three workers' compensation bill, eighty-one thousand. We had a third payroll in the month of December, which is roughly a hundred and twenty-five thousand. And we purchased the ambulance, this, in December for four hundred and seventy thousand. You take those away, we would have had a net surplus of sixty thousand dollars for the month. For the year, we have a surplus of six point six million. Beware that that is all ARPA money. That's ARPA money was six point five million dollars roughly. So we actually from operations had a hundred thousand dollar surplus. Uh that surplus money is not to be spent, it's to be, well, it's to be spent at your discretion. Um my recommendation has always been to set surplus aside for future use. Case you have any kind of emergency or any kind of major capital asset or capital acquisition that you that you're interested in undertaking. For the that's for the income statement. Uh the street fund had a, a um income of a hundred and forty-seven, I'm sorry, street fund had an income of ninety-seven thousand dollars for the month. Surplus of nine hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars for the year. And the Parks and Recreation Fund had a fifty-three thousand dollar surplus for the month. And a two hundred and five thousand dollar surplus for the year. And that basically is the A and P tax money. That's really the highlights of the statement of revenue and expenditures for the month. If you have any specific questions, please feel free to reach out to me. Or the balance sheet position, we currently have three billion eight hundred thousand dollars worth of liquid cash. Ten million dollars worth of invested cash, which in talking with the bank should return us approximately I say between four hundred and twenty-five and four hundred and fifty thousand. The bank's a little more exact, they think it'll be about four hundred and forty-one thousand dollars over a twelve-month period. Which gives us total assets of thirteen point eight million. We have current liabilities of a hundred and forty-one thousand. Those are all payroll related. There are things like retirement, like lot fee, uh medical insurance premiums, et cetera. Uh which gives a fund balance of thirteen million six hundred and sixty-eight thousand. And total liabilities and fund balance of thirteen million eight hundred thousand. Your cash liabilities has a two hundred and thirty-four point thirty-seven to one ratio. Which is pretty darn good. Assets liability is two hundred and fifty-four point six-three to one ratio. Liquid cash to liabilities, seventy-two point forty-eight to one ratio. That's really the highlights of the financial statement. If you have any questions, yes, ma'am.
How do you figure your cash to liabilities, your ratios right there? How do you get that?
That's liquid cash. So cash to liabilities would be um thirteen million eight hundred thousand to the current, the current liabilities. That's how you would get that.
Have I got more questions for Carl? And I was something I mentioned to, through the December twenty twenty-two general street fund and also the court report, which is in your drop box.
Don't mind it.
We got a motion from Keith. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
You guys second from Amy or or Misty, whichever one. A hall of favor?
All right.
Anyone opposed? All right, next is department reports, and the department heads, most of them are here. Uh does anybody have any questions for reports that were provided? Here none. Uh before we go to public comments, Justin Eichman is here. Uh he's here representing the Ralph Coleman lawsuit that we tabled last month. And he has another meeting to go to, and he asked if we could take care of that before, so he can get to the other meeting. And then I'll go right to public comment. Are y'all okay with that? Okay, come on, I'll put the, I'll put the resolution up there.
Council, good to see you all again and to hear Misty. Um my name is Justin Eichman, and along with Tom Picklack and Amanda LaFever, who are the city's lawyers, and lawsuit uh of Ralph Coleman uh versus uh against the Centerton. As well know, we all spent today together in August twelfth uh in federal courts, a uh settlement conference in front of the magistrate judge. Um and in that uh settlement conference, we came to a resolution uh of that particular case um that was approved by by you all there. Um however, that was not a called meeting, and so this is a rather pro forma exercise where we acknowledge and ratify uh that agreement that the city came to in 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 August twelfth. Uh on the resolution, uh I, the only guy I note is that uh the date should be down two thousand twenty-three, uh but I think that could just be marked through as a
That's right.
Okay, I was at the very top.
Oh.
But uh that that was my mistake, because I had written it for.
That's, that's the resolution we use. We tabled it.
Okay, then you tabled it, perfect.
We tabled it as the last meeting, and you're already there.
You're absolutely on top of it. I apologize. Uh but uh nevertheless, the resolution uh simply identifies that um uh that agreement. There is record of that agreement. It was read into the record. I don't know if you remember that from the uh at the end of that, that long day. Uh it was actually read into the record, and there is a transcript of that, and so I just acknowledges that that uh agreement was made. And uh if there are any questions, let me know, but I think it's just rather pro forma at this point.
Questions for Justin? Someone like make a motion to read Resolution twenty-two dash forty-eight by title only.
So moved.
A motion, we have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Elam.
Yes.
And Warren.
Yes.
Josie Reed.
Yes.
Pete and Botham.
Yes, ma'am.
Justin Cowgar.
Yes.
Amy Rosette.
Yes.
Resolution number two thousand twenty-two dash four-eight, State of Central Mid-Kennedy, Arkansas, a resolution to acknowledge, ratify, and approve the settlement of litigation.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-two dash forty-eight.
So moved.
You have a motion, we have a second?
I'll start it.
Roll call.
Your Rosette. Yes, Justin Cowgar.
Yes.
Pete and Botham.
Yes, ma'am.
Josie Reed. Yes. Darren Warren.
Yes.
And D. Elam.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you, council. Thank you, mayor.
So next, moving my timer, the next will be the public comments, unfortunately, this. Uh well timed, is I do ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. And if you speak on anything, you want anything, it's coming up on the agenda. I will say, though, there are two appeal hearings coming up. One for property one-two-six-six-year-old Wood Road, also six thirty-one Bliss Street. Those appeal hearings are coming. How that will work is uh we will have a representative from each of these projects come up to the podium and explain why they feel like the planning commission's comments were an error. I will then give an overview of of the meeting from the planning commission. After that, we will allow public comment on those two items since it is a hearing. And then the council can ask any questions of of the applicants, and then they'll vote. Okay, so I just wanted to make it so if you're here to talk about those two projects, there will be public hearing part of that. So with that, uh and if you do come uh for public hearing, please state your name and address, you know, for our record. Uh but we can get it in the minutes, and with that I will open public hearing. Anybody wants to to speak, come on up to the podium. I'll start the time after you state your name and address.
My name's Cindy Zoomstein, ten ninety-two Main Street. I wrote my notes down because I'm very passionate about this situation. Um I will be heavily, heavily impacted by whatever decision y'all make tonight. Um a week ago, my husband and I attended the planning meeting to oppose the construction of a come-and-go convenience store and gas station in our neighborhood. We were very surprised at what we learned about the city planning department and the planning commission. We walked away with the understanding that the city planners and planning commission don't care where businesses go or what type of business it is, so long as it comes to Centerton. We also learned the properly, the property directly across the street to the north of the property of this property, which I forgot to mention, it's the uh rezoning of the Steel, Tony Steel property. We learned that the property directly across from this one has already been approved by the city planner and planning commission to build a convenience store and gas station with no exempt uh conditions attached to it as part of the UD. So we have convenience store and gas station number one. As stated in the planning meeting last week, due to the neighborhoods, we've we've done with the light, or we've gone with the lightest impact, and yet, last week, we've a second convenience store and gas station at the same intersection. This is not the lightest impact for the neighborhoods, nor is it the best use for this property. This intersection is highly congested. It is highly congested during peak hours with no immediate remedy in sight. This intersection is the widest point of the streets involved. Town View and Main Street are narrow two-lane roads and no shoulders. Seba, Town View, and Main Street already can't handle the current traffic, and there are additional houses and businesses approved to be built within the neighborhood, and again, no remedy in sight. We would also be interest, or it would also be interesting to know if traffic impact studies were done before these developments were approved by the planners. I would like to read a quote from a study reviewed or stu- study reviewed by Community and Environmental Defense Services. Because they summarize my feelings and concerns perfectly. The council has the link to this review. Well, as get, while a gas station, convenience store can provide many benefits, these establishments can have a severe impact on human health, property value, and other quality of life issue aspects when allowed too close to homes or other inappropriate locations. Finally, city planners generally help shape communities by creating sustainable and well-organized communities. But in this situation, the planners and the planning commission have failed the citizens of Centerton. We pray that you deny the rezoning of this property as planning has done a poor job of presenting a plan for a well-organized community. They have acted independently from the community, and all of our concerns have fallen on deaf ears.
Anyone else?
Please state your name and address.
My name is Brian Riley. I live at one sixteen Brookshire Lane. My comments tonight concern alcohol sales. Uh current laws restrict the sale of alcohol within a thousand feet of any school or church facility, but and by all appearances, it would look innocent if the come-and-go was allowed to be built. However, with the current plans to relocate the daycare center farther north from its current location, we can be assured that a convenience store will then apply to sell alcohol. Has anyone determined if the proposed daycare relocation area falls within the one-thousand-foot distance requirement? With alcohol sales come an increase in crime. One article by the Community Environmental Defense Services reported an increase of six percent. Another study I read reported, and I quote, children with an alcohol outlet on the route to school were more likely to be offered alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs, as well as being exposed to drug selling and seeing people using drugs, end quote. Reading reports like this from experts who have studied this issue causes to be great concern for our neighborhood. We are told that the planning commission does what's best for Centerton. What they don't understand, every individual living here makes up this community we call Centerton. We, the opposed, want what's best for Centerton, as well as, as well, or we wouldn't be living here. High-impact gas station and convenience stores in the neighborhood is not the best interest for Centerton, and is not the best use of the land. Finally, there are no current plans for any road expansion in these proposed facility locations. All the roads leading to the proposed businesses only have two lanes with very short turning lanes. The roads are very congested all around this area with cars frequently backed up nearly a mile from one oh two to gamble. We're also told that the city is talking with the state, make improvements on Main Street before the city takes over. But number one, if anything, if it's like the current piazza we have in the Casey Store entrance and exits, we don't need that type of improvement. And number two, no improvements will be done or completed before the gas station and convenience store is built. It sounds like we're putting the cart before the horse again to me. Based on these factors, I also request the regional property be denied due to proper planning, again. And then I have a reference for that article, that quote, if anybody didn't read it.
On lunch?
Question. Um my comments today are regarding the appeals for, so which room real quick? My name is Dr. Welker. I live at five-one-one Tamarone Drive. My comments are regarding um the appeals for Bush Road and Bliss Street. Is now an appropriate time for that?
No, there'll be a, a appeal hearing, and I will allow public comments before they go.
And that's tonight.
Yes, oh yeah, I'll be, that's coming up actually next. Well, a couple of ordinances. Not that one, but. That's a good question.
Crystal Penner, fifteen oh one Aniston. Um after attending several of these meetings, I I felt it was necessary, so I wrote down some notes. I was gonna say something after December's meeting, I decided I better have some clear direction in my, in my speech here. So I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of at least dozens of residents who won't speak up on their own. I repeatedly hear concerns from citizens, city employees, and council members regarding uh infrastructure, including wider streets, sidewalks, and traffic control systems like stop signs, traffic lights, roundabouts, et cetera. I've also heard from all of you wanting to bring in more businesses that increase tax revenue, bring jobs, and even citizens from neighboring towns to Centerton, whether it's to shop, eat, or work. Some of you have mentioned how we get away from being a bedroom community. Yet last month, Councilman Justin Cowgar pointed out that we basically sold all the land on one of two, which is now being consumed mostly with fast food restaurants and expensive small-business plazas. So we're running out of land to bring businesses here that will help Centerton achieve those tax and destination goals. At the same time, with what precious land we have left, you're approving mass residential developments every single month, knowing what that will do to our already strained infrastructure and resources. These actions only solidify that we are and always will be a bedroom community. So I have two questions I ask each of you to consider tonight. One, is infrastructure really a problem in Centerton? Do you experience the same things the rest of us as citizens, or not? And two, do you think we should stay a bedroom community to Bentonville? If you said yes to infrastructure being a problem, and it's only going to continue to get worse, why not pause on all of these developments and focus on tangible plans to improve our road systems before any other developments are put into motion? You can even ask these big developers to lean on the state and county to help push through some of these road expansions that we've been talking about for years. If you think, no, we should move beyond a bedroom community, this is another reason to pause, hold on all development approval until you have a clear plan on how to grow our city with our own resources and community staples that make us a destination town. We all want this town to grow, and we as citizens want to thrive in it. But this has to be done responsibly because we're running out of time to change our future. There is no law that states we need even two new developments a month here. There are other options to ask developers to help with infrastructure needs. How you move voting, how, sorry, how you vote moving forward will tell our citizens what the future of our town looks like. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Raj Chitam. I live on two thirty Townley Road. My property is only about two hundred and fifty from the intersection there where they're, where they put in the red light. I used to sit on my watch, front porch, and watch the wrecks as they happened with where they put in the red light. That, that is really have to sound a lot, but still, the traffic is terrible.
In the short driveway right there at the intersection or the long one?
What's that?
In the short, like right there at the corner, or either long driveway in the middle of the two houses?
The driveway is, well, I've got two and a half acres there. Yeah. And that's one reason why I bought the place. It's not in the subdivision, and it's uh got plenty of property, but uh you know, and right now, they're paving the streets across the street from me in the, in Tuscan Division, and there's gonna be a lot of people coming out there. And uh I just think uh, you know, I'd like to know if the traffic was ever considered above the planners, because we have traffic up uh nearly a mile in the residential areas, and uh people can't get out of the driveways or turn onto Main Street to sleep them. How's it gonna be impacted? I would also be interested in a traffic impact study. We all know the city needs businesses to thrive, but allowing a business that says the convenience store or gas station in the middle of a large residential neighborhood is not the answer. Not the best use of the property. By two convenience store gas stations will have the maximum impact on the neighborhood. We've heard the arguments that there are already two businesses there. Yes, that's true, but one is a daycare and the other is a sports academy. Those do not fit the description of the lightest impact of the neighborhoods. But let me remind you that we have hundreds and maybe thousands of homes surround, surrounding, surrounding this property. As well as more being built in the community. I would definitely consider this a residential neighborhood with two minimum impact businesses. There are numerous locations that are better suited for businesses as a convenience store or gas station, for example, Highway seventy-two, seventy-nine, and one oh two. So I had a number of studies showing that local economics are better off with locally owned businesses compared to those who are part of natural change. These studies show that forty, forty-eight percent of purchases that locally owned business circulates through the local economy compared to less than fourteen percent. Uh, purchases is natural change stores. The armor question, council vote, no, we're rezoning this property due to the lack of impact data and therefore an inappropriate approval from planning.
Gavin over at Big Horns. Mine's totally different. I would like to reference uh, something with the planning department again, having issues that I brought this to your attention to via email. And have gotten no response from the planning department since.
He wrote you on Friday.
I haven't.
Lorraine sent you a message on Friday asking for some clarification.
I haven't received it.
She, she emailed Friday.
Okay, well, I'll double check, but um, my, my request was again, talk to the city council about the planning commission. And the building department seemed to have a difference of opinion on how to utilize model homes or the, the ability to build a model home. In a new subdivision in order to receive the public in a clean and safe environment as opposed to, you know, dirty lots and old trailers and stuff of that nature. So I was given a permission from the planning commission, a conditional use permit to build a model home. That was granted, but then was denied a building permit because the building department said we had to have a final plat. In order to do the model home. So I was trying to see if there was some way that the council could find or make a resolution that we could still build that model home without the final plat. Although the planning department would, I mean, they would allow that, but the building department wouldn't issue a certificate of occupancy until the final plat. Does that give us that six months to build that model home prior to needing the model homes? As it is now, we can't even start that till we get a final plat. Well, now we're six months behind being able to receive the public into a place to, you know, sell houses or pre-sell houses. So I was looking for.
Who gave the approval on that, do you know?
That?
Who's the contact you worked with that gave you the approval on that?
The, the planning commission.
Do you know, like, was there certain contacts that worked with you through that?
Um, well, I went through the whole conditional use permit process with notification, paying the fees, the whole nine yards. And after the conditional use permit was granted, I went and got a construction loan, the whole, got approval for that, and then I went down to get a permit and. Building department denied the permit.
Can you tell the council how long you've been going through?
So my conditional per, conditional use permit was granted March first of last year. So I'm almost a year into this and I still haven't been able to get it started. I did delay the subdivision for about two months because of electrical transformers and the issues that are going on in the supply chain. However, picking that back up again. Subdivision should now be completed, we think, in April. So it would be nice to have a model home ready for potential, you know, people to the public to be able to come in as opposed to again, putting up a trailer and having them come to a muddy lot and. You know, not near as nice and receiving so that we would be able to do that because the way that this would be done, it'd be right there on the corner of the very first house as you turn into the subdivision. It would be paved parking, it would be ready to go as soon as. For certainly because occupancy was given, then you could actually use it as an office, but we were looking to be able to start it and build it.
Kind of Q and A, but like what?
All he has to do is answer Lorraine's message. You know, what Rob needs is he needs a platted lot. And we recommended that he do a track split. And anyway, uh, Lorraine has responded to him. He's worked with Lorraine, you know, we can.
All that was.
No, hold on, Lorraine, I know it's like Q and A, but like, let's talk through this because that's a, a year later, almost. How did we get here? I went through planning and you're getting an email last Friday, so I would love to hear from the planning department personally, what happened? Or why are we having so much back and forth?
Again, the original part of it was, was because I don't believe the planning commission and the building department were seeing eye to eye on what needed to happen. Because the planning commission did grant the conditional use and I did have to provide the.
No, I understand. I'm not, I'm asking Lorraine, like, what happened? Did she know or she? What, do you know what happened? Are you able to add any extra information on that?
He's not going to issue without a platted lot.
Because there wasn't a platted lot and also. And I think.
Does Roush Coleman do that on their, on their builds too? They, they do a plot map before they build a model home? The spec builders, I mean, non-custom, like, does Roush Coleman do that? Does, does?
We've never done that before with issuing a, allowing a model home to be built prior to a plat. Prior to the final.
Well, I think part of the problem is too.
Oh, I guess, I was just curious.
Part of the problem too is there's a disconnect between communication, if I'm correct. The disconnect and, and we need to figure out going forward, how do we stop this long gap in communication?
How to get a plane before that?
Well, and how did one send out these to all the departments or, you know, so.
And, and I, I don't feel like it was really at this, that the, the planning departments did what we, or we followed what the planning department requested us to do as far as we. And we got the conditional use, but at that point it got out of the planning department's hands and went to the building department. They said, oh, no, we can't do it, but the whole.
Has to be a platted lot and I think that's part of the building code.
But that was the whole purpose of the conditional use was to allow me to use a preliminary platted lot to build that house on that already had water and electric to it. And then once the sewer line was connected and waited until the final plat was done, then get the certificate of access. That was the whole purpose of that.
You answer her email, we can work together and hopefully come to a solution.
Well, but why is it taking so long?
Well, I ain't heard from him in six months. I mean, he stopped emailing us and then all of a sudden we got one.
Here a while back.
So, so there is, okay.
Yeah. It's a break.
Yeah.
I've heard from you in six months, though.
All right, thank you.
Last call for public comments. All right, public comments are closed. All right, so the next, our net first ordinance, well, before we do that. Hang on, let me get my. Yeah, and I'm doing, I just gotta see where I'm at. All right. So before we start with something like make motion to read ordinance twenty twenty-two dash ninety-seven. Twenty twenty-three dash zero one, zero two, zero three, zero four, zero five, zero six, zero seven. And resolution twenty twenty-two dash forty-seven, twenty-three dash zero one, zero two, zero three, and zero four by title only. We have a motion. We have seconds?
You're a chef?
Yes.
Justin Cowgar?
Yes.
You pick and bottom?
Yes, ma'am.
Rosie Reed?
Yes.
Darren Warren?
Yes.
Nancy Elam?
Yes.
With something like big motion, suspended rules requiring to read on three separate occasions, ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash ninety-seven. Twenty twenty-three dash zero one, zero two, zero three, zero four, zero five, zero six, and zero seven. So I'm at a motion by Keith. Second by Justin, roll call.
Nancy Elam?
Yes.
Darren Warren?
Yes.
Jersey Reed?
Yes.
You pick and bottom?
Yes, ma'am.
Justin Cowgar? Amy Rochette?
Yes.
Yeah, right. That was three separate occasions, right? That's all we need, right, right?
Say that again.
That's all we need, right? The title only and the three separate occasions. All right, good. All right, so our first ordinance, the ordinance twenty-two dash ninety-seven. Uh, this is an ordinance that we tabled last month. Uh, this is an ordinance that was brought forward to, uh, to allow the city council. To approve any rate, water rate recommendations by the, by the, uh, Water and Sewer Commission. Uh, it was tabled because, uh, there was an under, there was a thought that it was not legal to do this. So I did send it to the municipal league to look at. I've sent you all the response. Uh, you know, you can do it if you want to. However, they recommend that you don't change it since the city has created a water sewer commission and gave them authority to do this. Sewer rates still come back to you and I think that's by state law. So anyway, uh, we need to dispose this one way or the other, either, you know, approve it or deny it. And I've got, I did go to the Water and Sewer Commission meeting, uh, the last one, and they also asked that we, that we do not approve this ordinance.
So this is keeping city council, um, ones that vote for it, is that correct? Is that how I understand it or no, the opposite? This is giving the commission?
Mission already has the authority to set the water rates.
Okay.
It just retains it unless you want that authority to.
Say that again, why are we amending this?
If, if you want the final say on the water rate, then, then you want to pass this. But if you want to leave it, Water and Sewer Commission, let them set the rates. And, and I will say, you know, they don't just, they, they set rates by, by rate studies. I did send you all the rate study too, I believe, you know, about three weeks ago. So.
But if this is kept with the commission, correct?
Yeah, they'll set the rates and they'll come to you before they change your rate. They're going to be here tonight to talk to you about proposed rate increase.
I was going to say, how is, how would we, is there any voting on that if there was a rate increase?
Uh, currently, no. But if.
They would have.
They vote amongst themselves, yeah.
They have the ultimate power to raise the rates.
But they also do come back to the commission, I mean, to the council and let you know. That my three minutes?
I mean, they also, they also know what their financials are.
Oh, yeah, I know, I know that. Yeah, yeah.
And I'm going to make a motion that due to the fact that council with municipal league. Uh, said that we shouldn't leave it as it is, then I'm asking that we, uh, don't take any action on this.
Okay, that's a motion. Do we have a second on that motion?
Do we have any other questions?
Oh, I'm so, so sorry. I was going to ask that before we.
Okay.
I usually serve it. We have any other questions? And we have a motion?
So just so everybody understands, we're voting to have the water commission keep.
Continue, yeah, yes.
Okay.
Uh, uh, based on Keith's motion to.
Which is based off municipal leaning direction.
Off their guidance.
Yeah, their guidance. So I would second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Well, there isn't any more discussion, I'm sorry. Make sure. All right, you go ahead and do it, roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Jersey Reed?
Yes.
You pick and bottom?
Yes.
Justin Cowgar? Amy Rochette?
Yeah.
Thank you.
We have one other question.
Sure.
So we got three commissioners that make the decision to increase the rates.
Correct.
So that citizens could maybe have more input. Could we look at increasing the number of commissioners?
Believe that has come to other me, and Bob, that has come recently to other meetings.
Short and sweet, they all are citizens.
Some of the stuff related with the city league department.
That would be a great job for you, Jason.
Yeah.
My question is increasing the number of commissioners. So we got three people making a decision on rate increases for the entire city. Okay, there's six of us.
Commissioners, real quick, commissioners are appointed, correct? City councils are elected.
I would expect the commission will forward to the council a recommendation on increasing the size of commission membership. Because I, I think it'd be fair that there'd be more commissioners that give citizens more of a say when it comes to, to rate increases. I, I think that way, if we're leaving the, the water rate decision on the commissioners, we, we should have a larger representation. I'm saying we assign twenty people, but maybe look at doubling it. You know, you get to try to get a couple of people from each ward, kind of like we do now, uh, that give citizens a voice when it comes to. To the rate, that the citizens see the need, that the citizens are involved, uh, with.
I, I believe that we'll forward your recommendation.
But we could do it without the discussion.
The city council will take whatever action they will. And I remember a recent meeting, they talked about increasing the five and use that way.
Five, we've discussed five. I expect that's probably forward in their future.
I know, I know last they tabled to the first.
I think you brought it, you brought it to us. Before, when you, you had already, y'all had already talked about it.
We've kicked it around for several months, but I think that we'll be taking it action in the future.
Thank you, Bob.
What's the, what's the appointed process look like for that? Like, just. What did the appointed process look like for the commission? Like, they just? Give interest in it?
Ask the, the, uh, the commission is, uh, notified the community that we're looking to appoint a commissioner. They're, they. Make their presentation to, you know, and then we forward a recommendation to the mayor. Who presents the recommendation to you.
Doesn't the mayor have the ability to appoint that commission regardless?
The law says that the mayor. Makes an appointment that must be ratified by the, by the council.
Correct, but he could appoint three people tonight.
No, you have to change the ordinance. You have to change municipal code. The code says the commission was organized with three members. You want to change it, you will have to change the municipal code and change the size of the commission.
Something we could look at like the next meeting. When that quit February? New year, new you.
We'll discuss it next week at the meeting.
No, you can talk from there. I mean, go ahead.
Is there not a city ordinance already in place for the appointing process?
That's what I'm saying, but if you bring it next month, you can roll it up.
By February.
We will bring you, we will refer to you. We will talk in our meeting next week. We will, we will refer to the commit, to the mayor, an amendment. And seek out to the municipal code to change the membership.
And it basically takes fifteen days of advertisement and then.
I don't want all the policy.
If they made the recommendation, I'll, I'll bring you back, propose ordinance to change the number and then they can take applications.
But we can't, we can't advertise for, you all changed the code. Change the size.
Hey, what, what date are the water bills go out again?
We meet on.
He wants them in the water.
Tuesday of each month at eight thirty in the morning.
If y'all are meeting next week, is it something that you could possibly get on the water bill to let citizens notify that we're looking for one? Potentially that way you could get the word out. Cause I mean, I don't know that I've seen anything on social media before. So how could you spread the word?
Well, we, it's been so many years since we pointed anybody, but yeah, well.
uh, as, yeah, about water bills. Yeah, we, we bill on two billing cycles a month. Uh, the uh, so the billing cycle that starts in eight days uh, already having a notice of the rate increase. And we will post a formal, now that was, was y'all had a chance to look at it. We will be making on our Facebook, on our website, we will be posting the notice of rate increase and the rate study.
Yeah, I think it's also important coming from the last meeting, though. One of the things we addressed is anytime we increase something, obviously, it's a very emotional subject. So, I mean, walking through the points that we talked about the last meeting, we've held and actually taken a little bit of a loss in, in this last couple of years. It's like, I educating the community.
It was a narrow decision.
But I, but people don't know that.
Our recognition, decision to increase the water rates was precipitated by the department, the Arkansas Department of Agriculture communication test. It's that we need, that we were out of compliance with Act two, six oh two. All right. Yeah, we'll be coming back. Yeah, we're coming back to that, so. And what, and what I will do, Justin, is after their meeting, I'll email everybody, let you know what they decide and I'll bring back an ordinance next month. But that's what they say. Okay. All right, so next is the appeal hearing. Uh, this is the hearing for the George W. and Charlotte Weeks property located one, two, six, six, zero, Bush Road. And like I stated earlier in the meeting, uh, first I'll bring the applicant up or representative of the applicant.
Sorry, on this previous order, are we voting to table?
No, it's done.
No action.
No action. It's done.
Okay.
Yeah, now we already voted and they did a roll call now.
They'll come in.
All right, so back to the appeal hearing. Well, I'm gonna bring up, I think Will's here. And he's gonna come up and uh, explain to you why he felt like the planning commission decision was incorrect. Uh, then I will give you an overview of the meeting. I think some of you were at the meeting. And then I will open up for any public comment uh, that anybody wants to speak. And when I give the overview, I do have a lot of email from the public, which I summarize, you know, for, for everybody. But uh, the vote was four to three to deny this uh, from the planning commission. Uh, just so you know, that, that meeting was uh, November fifteenth. So Will, go ahead. You're up.
Good evening, council. My name is Will Kelstrom with Watkins, Brandon Curry and Roger. Um, I represent the applicant piece over here. Um, so we have asked to rezone this from A one to R three D. Um, like the mayor just said, it went to planning commission on the fifteenth. And there was a vote to approve it, which got three, that went three to four, so it failed. Um, we're here appealing it. So to start, I know that you guys as a city council have a policy of upholding the planning commission's decisions. That's what they're there for. They're there to vet stuff before it gets to you guys. It's a good policy to be in alignment with them, and I think they do a good job. However, like I said, this is a three, four vote. It was close. I think it's fair to ask for reconsideration based on a few things that I'm going to say tonight. Um, so again, we want R three D zoning. Uh, we're proposing thirteen lots, which would be twenty-six units on five acres, which is about five units per acre. Uh, I want to address some of the public concerns that I heard from the last meeting before I get to my main argument. Um, the first one is traffic. This always comes up. I want to point out that Tamaran subdivision would be, which I think are here tonight. There's about two, three hundred lots in that subdivision. That's a bunch of cars. Um, like I said, we're proposing twenty-six units. Whatever general, whatever traffic would be generated by this development absolutely pales in comparison to what they generate on daily basis. So there were some current concerns about the density and the zonings nearby, whether they compatible or not. I'm gonna read off a few of these. So you've got R three SF to the west. That allows for single family up to six units an acre. Um, you've got a PUD to the east, which I understand is at seven units an acre. Um, Tamaran subdivision is zoned R two, which allows shockingly duplexes and single family at just over five units an acre. There is also residential multifamily four to the north, which allows for apartments, high density residential, all of that business. Uh, we're asking for R three D. It allows up to seven units an acre, which is two higher than Tamaran and one higher than the subdivision to the west. However, we're proposing five units an acre. Uh, and this is not really an issue of what if someone else buys it? What are they gonna do with it? They could build up to seven units an acre. Uh, the density here is physically and practically limited by the code and the physical constraints. Anyone who develops this property is gonna have to build a road up through it. Uh, that's fifty feet wide per code. Uh, they're gonna have to do a cul-de-sac so fire trucks can turn around. That's gotta be a hundred twenty feet wide per code. That all takes up an acre. The topography demands that you have to have a detention bond. That's a third of an acre. So really, anyone that develops this site is, is gonna be hard pressed to get any higher than five, six units, which is right in line with the density that's around it. There were some concerns about property values. I probably don't have to say this, but has, has anyone looked at your Zillow estimates lately? They ain't going down. Um, it's really, uh, it's, it's hard to imagine anything that will bring down property values around here. Um, so getting to my main argument. So nearby zonings, you've got R three SF to the west, R two surrounding it, which is Tamaran subdivision. R three D just to the north, which is on the other side of Tamaran adjacent. And RMF four also adjacent to Tamaran, just to the north, and then PUD, which is at seven units an acre. This is right in the middle of all that. The code says it's seven units an acre on this property is really more like five. So we, we're right in the middle that I, I don't see how that density is not compatible. You guys' master plan labels this council as low to medium density residential. That, that designation under the plan calls for detached and detached housing. Um, this is the plan that the city council approved. If we don't want to mix attached and detached housing where the plan tells us to, where do we want to do it? So I think with this, when you take into consideration some of these things that I've addressed, what this all really boils down to is, is whether we want duplexes next to single family housing. Um, i- there's some idea that duplexes are not compatible with single family houses. There cities all over the country where you've got duplexes right next to single family, including Northwest Arkansas, and there's no problems. I have duplexes next to my house. I've never had any problems with them. Um, so I think that a lot of this stems from the fact that duplexes are usually rentals. I have two points on this. I think that people often forget that they did not move out of their parents' house and buy a house immediately at age eighteen. All kinds of people rent. Sometimes they're students, sometimes they're people who just moved here and they couldn't find a house cuz the market's so darn crazy right now. And the second point is that if you get on Zillow, there are about a hundred rentals within one mile of this, this piece of property. Can't tell cuz they look like the other houses, but they're there. A bunch of those houses are rentals hiding in plain sight, but no one complains about them cuz they look the same. So when you take into consideration that the traffic is kind of negligible, the density is, is kind of the same, the property values are um, not gonna go down. And you consider that this is what the future land use plan calls for and that the surrounding zones are pretty similar to it. I think a lot of what this public concern boils down to is I don't want to look at it. And I don't think that's a very good reason for denying a zoning. So with that, I'm here if you guys have any questions, and if you would afford me the, if you would afford me the ability, I would like to get up and address public comment if you all allow it. Thank you.
You have any questions for Will before I give the overview?
Well, I'm gonna have a question for Lorraine.
You, well, we asked one, we'd go over the person that.
At any time.
All right, so, well, the planning commission did deny that. Uh, I do have the, the land use map up there like Will did talk about, and everything around it is, you know, low to medium density. And uh, and then here's, you know, it shows the median density all around this thing. So anyway, when they, when plan commission voted, uh, they did have the question is the rezoning consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan? Uh, and they, they feel like it was. But it does say the land use plan calls for low, medium density, which is up to seven units per acre. But the next question had some discussion is to propose rezoning compatible with the surrounding area zones. One commissioner uh, disagreed, pointed out that on the surrounding areas, all of the detached single, all the surrounding areas detached, single family homes. Uh, forum voted, our forum agreed, and then uh, another commissioner stated he believed it was compatible cuz there's R three duplex on the other side of the R two developments. Uh, so there was four that didn't feel like it was compatible, and three felt like it was. Would the limited uses in the new zone be compatible in this location's surrounding areas? They said, based on a previous discussion, forum voted no, and uh, three voted yes. And then would the rezoning provide a benefit to this landowner, but not consider for any other similar properties? And everybody agrees it does not provide a benefit. And then if the public is opposed, why? Uh, you know, and uh, during that meeting, they didn't list it out. I've got some other information here. But there was probably at least a dozen people spoke at that meeting. I, I don't, you know, I don't, I don't know how many. I know, and I'll talk about summarization emails in a minute, but there was at least a dozen people spoke. And, and a lot of the concerns was the traffic, property values, privacy, uh, crime and density concerns. Um, and then at the end of the day, they did take a motion and, and like I said, it was four to, four to deny and three to vote yes. So it was denied. And like Will said, that's why they're here tonight. Uh, they did, prior to that meeting, they did send in twenty-two emails, which I've forwarded to everybody. I hope, you know, I, I forwarded everybody about, just so the ones, the folks are here. I forwarded all this about three weeks ago to the council. Every email that you sent to them, to the planning commission, they received. I think I even acknowledged that some people, you know, sent me a message, say, yeah, we have the email, so. And that was, there was twenty-two emails, plus at least a dozen people spoke here in opposition to this. Uh, the, the summarization, what I've seen in, in emails is, uh, they had, they felt like there's enough high density in the area. Okay, also, you heard a, another citizen talk a little, a little bit ago about infrastructure. Didn't feel like it could handle the traffic on Bush, Kimmel and two seventy-nine. There's also safety concerns due to not adjacent walk paths, and I think this has a lot to do with the school. And then also concerned that high density will lead to crime, lower house, home values, and will impact the schools. Uh, adding duplexes or apartments will increase traffic. And we're concerned with access with the two-lane roads, concerned with the smaller homes. Uh, the, you know, one comment said they need, you know, bigger lots and bigger homes. Or larger homes with large lots. And that was one I read in there. And I think I, I pretty well got it with what I wrote. Uh, at this time, unless you have any questions for me, I, I will open up for public comment. I know there's several residents from Tamaron here who, who would like to, you know, and if I miss something, please, you know, come on up. Uh, if you do want to speak, please state your name and address, just so we get it in our minutes. So I, I know you wanted, Doctor, come on up.
I'm Dr. Bronte Welker. I'm a resident in Tamaron. I live at five one one Tamaron Drive. Um, I'd actually like to start with addressing Council's um, statements. According to the Centerton Comprehensive Plan, the designation for apartments, duplexes and high-density housing has already been met per the plan that's already been adopted by Centerton. The apartment demand was met by Maddox, which is built in uh, twenty nineteen, one hundred ninety-nine units. Watercolors, which was built in twenty twenty with two hundred thirty-three units, for an additional four hundred and thirty-one apartments, just apartments, which was more than was designated as needed by the Centerton Comprehensive Plan of three hundred and forty-five. Um, I'd also like to point out that the rental um, housing demand affordability showed that there was only a demand for um, apartments at fifty-four. The only high-density housing that's need, that's unmet in Centerton per the Centerton Comprehensive Plan for senior citizens and assisted living, which has not been proposed by this change. There's four major developments going up between Tycoon and Greenhouse that are all being built on the south side of Grimsley. Uh, and another one hundred and seventy-nine units of high density with only one outlet on Kimmel, which you can see there. Um, I just wanted to get that out of the way because I know that we are short on time. I'd also like to address something that I feel like hasn't been talked a lot about, which is our school system is continuing to suffer because of the current trend of high-density homes. The school systems are already under tremendous pressure and will suffer further from the increase in high-density housing approvals rather than rezoning for maybe something like large businesses or large lot housing, which Mayor Bill talked about. Our school districts need the money that large businesses and high home values bring, not duplexes. Busing, extracurricular activities, teacher salaries are all needed from tax money that comes from high-value businesses and homes. Our schools and homes just can't afford another apartment or duplex or high-density housing project. Bentonville West already legs behind Bentonville due to these uh, due to the vast difference in budget as a result of the difference in our property values. So that's why I feel like citizens are concerned. It's not because I'm worried about my pocketbook. I'm worried about my kids and their school. I'd also like to, um, talking about my kids, this is really the biggest thing for me, is the danger of the increased traffic on unsuitable roadways. The intersection of Vaughn and Bush, if you can look at it, which is just bear, just barely uh, past that new um, where they want to make it, you could, yeah, you can point out for me. Thank you so much. There's only the two-lane roads with no crosswalk, no turn lane, no center lane. Cars frequently drive on the grass to avoid school traffic congestion. Children are forced to walk in ditches and along roadways because there's no sidewalks. They're already at risk of being hit by drivers who routinely drive on the grass and even legal drivers trying to make that turn out of Bush and Fish Hatchery. Just give me just one more minute if that's.
For fun.
Thank you. The risk for children walking to and from school is so serious that the speed limit on Fish Hatchery was reduced from forty-five miles an hour to thirty-five miles an hour due to high levels of pedestrian traffic on unsidewalked roads per Centerton PB. School traffic is blocked on Vaughn anytime between seven and eight AM and two thirty and three thirty PM with cars driving in ditches to get around school traffic to get to and from the airport or these other areas because there's only that one major highway, which I know you guys know, but I feel like it's important to say again. And lastly, I know this sounds like really dramatic, but in August twenty twenty-two, a child was hit in Centerton trying to get on a school bus because of a driver trying to get around congested school traffic. Our kids are being hit by cars because there's too much traffic. It's not acceptable and it's not appropriate. Um, I have a lot more to say here. I can answer questions if you have anything. I'm sure you've heard it all, but in the end, I just really appeal to you to consider the fact that Centerton, it needs some work before we can be putting in more high-density things. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
From Misty, Misty's no longer in the meeting. By voting members now, just so you know. Misty said she, she, everything was breaking up. She wasn't able to stay on the meeting, so she's no longer on Zoom. So we have any more comments on this? Come on up, sir.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Parker Tashima. I live at uh, one, two, seven, one, two, Bush Road, which is uh, just west of the property here that we're talking about the rezoning for. So um, my family live, live on that property, which is currently zoned as ag. And um, just wanted to kind of call out some of the things, uh, obviously, we talked about a lot of them. As Dr. Welker talked about, but specific to the traffic, I think that's our major concern here with the traffic piece is that we're just adding a lot more buildings here that we're not supporting with the traffic on those intersections. When you look at the map here, you can see clearly the Tamaron side to the south of this property, talking about all single-family houses and then all the new development that's been put on to the north here, uh, the Westridge Development, all single-family homes. So when you look at it, it's really just doesn't, doesn't feel like what we're seeing here is matching what's the surrounding properties. Get a quick search right there on the Westridge property. Those are two hundred and twenty dollars a square foot properties. It just doesn't seem like it's matching what we'd be putting in with duplexes. So that's my feedback. Thank you.
Lisa McCoy, twelve sixty-one Clyde Snow. I just wanted to set the record straight. Property values are going down here. Alone in the last six months, ours has gone down forty thousand. We live across from the high school. There's a surplus in homes and there's price cuts. If you look in Bella Vista and Bentonville, that's not the case. They're actually going a little bit up. So whatever's happening in Centerton, everybody's probably selling down, and I don't think this is gonna help.
Actually, my wife checked ours last week. Ours went up twenty-five thousand dollars.
Ours has gone down a hundred thousand.
Gone down six, oh, well, depending on who you're looking at.
Anyone else?
My name's Jess Blalock. I'm with Sunrise Developers. We own lots in uh, Westridge Village that back up to this property. And I pretty much just wanted, had to be known that we don't have any issues with the duplexes or, you know, anything that's going on there.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, Kyle Mwire, uh, six thirty-one List Street. Um, we live in a community, and I just want to make sure that we're we're using facts for these, these decisions as well. I think it's very important to understand traffic and schoolchildren. On average, this is coming from Parver, the joint convention for uh, multi-family housing. On average, one hundred single-family owner occupied houses include fifty-one schoolchildren. By contrast. Uh, multi-family housing on average, one hundred single family owner occupied houses include fifty-one schoolchildren. By contrast, apartments are attractive to single people, couples and without children. Which is why one hundred apartment units on average is just thirty-one children. Uh, disparity even greater was concerning only new construction, sixty-four children per one hundred. New single family houses versus twenty-nine children per one hundred new apartment. So we talk about children, our school system, I think it's important to recognize the facts that when we put in apartments duplexes, this is affordable housing our community needs. It's not overburdening our school systems. It's actually the building of larger lots with larger homes. It's overburdening our school systems. Um, also, when it comes to traffic, uh, and a per, uh, trip basis. Apartments are forty percent lower than single family homes. So when you put in apartments, it actually puts in fewer traffic trips per unit, per person in the area. So just want to make sure those facts were noted as well, um, and that we also support from our perspective. These multi-family units are going into serve our community and people who need housing.
Where did you give your address?
Yeah, uh, I currently live at three one one Violet Street. I own several properties in the area.
You're a property investor.
This will be, we're actually the next one on the docket, but yeah, we're, we're also developers as well, and we, we want to add, we want to add to the community. I just think it's really important that when we make these decisions. There's a lot of people involved in it. It's also important to come back to the facts of. We put in these types of duplexes, townhomes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Crystal Penner, fifteen oh one Aniston, again. Uh, I'm not gonna say anything better than what Dr. Welker said. I just simply want to say, I don't think we should be approving anything. Until traffic is figured out, even though it is twenty-six more units, that's one and a half cars per unit on average, so thirty-nine cars. That's another forty cars. They're trying to get out of that intersection and we cannot leave our neighborhood. At three thirty in the afternoon or three o'clock in the afternoon. I have to drive down to Tycoon and up to, to Centerton Boulevard to leave my property. And once all those developments are done, that's probably not gonna be an option either. So even though it is only twenty-six units and I don't want to take money out of anybody's pockets, I know that they're trying to cash in on the development opportunities here. I don't think we should be approving anything. And honestly, makes sense that the developers for Westridge are here, but I'm surprised the Westridge. Neighbors are not here because I don't, if I lived in a gated community, I wouldn't want duplexes.
Thank you, man.
My name is Nikki Casey. I live at seven thirteen Ponderosa Street. Um, I live down Fish Hatchery Road. You all know that, um. I still see children crossing that highway every single day. Every time I go to pick up my child, there are still children crossing this highway without a crosswalk. There are still people that are going around the traffic into those. To go to get to the airport. I have that happen to me every morning while I am waiting in line. To get my kid to school. There are people that are not paying attention to the signs. They're still not flashing lights on those signs. Yes, you did get a new sign. I am. That you got the new sign, but they don't get enough attention. That roads have to be addressed before we put new. I don't think that there's an issue with multi-family housing. I think that we probably do need that for these people, but we have. To approach the traffic situation before we, we put more homes in place. Thank you.
I'm Nadasha Richardson. I live at five ten Tamron Drive. Um, I just wanted to address a couple of things. Firstly, he said, let's focus on the facts. I couldn't agree more, but because we're focusing on the facts, I disagree with some things that were previously stated that. You know, we don't want to look at duplexes. I completely disagree. It's not my feeling about duplexes or, you know, that they're offensive to my eyes. It's really not about that. I want to echo what other people have said about the traffic, the sidewalks and these kinds of things. Um. But the reality is those people who are moving into those duplexes, they also matter. And they're gonna be impacted by not having access to sidewalks and safety because they will be attending the same school systems that I'm attending. It's not that I'm prejudiced or biased against renters. I've been a renter myself, but it's because they're people going to live in duplexes who are gonna be families. They matter too. So we need to speak for them and represent where they're gonna be living as well. And one more point I wanted to bring up is because there aren't sidewalks and there's all this congestion. A lot of children in our neighborhood who would like and prefer to walk to school. Aren't able to because it's not safe and their parents won't let them, which I completely agree with. But because of that, they are required to ride the buses and there's been a repeated issue where the buses are late due to. Lack of drivers, maintenance issues, et cetera, and mostly a lack of drivers. And so I just want to reiterate that if we aren't gonna provide. Safe roads and safe sidewalks for families, whether they're in high density or, you know, residential neighborhoods. Then we at a minimum need to have consistent funding for busing to and from schools. Thank you.
I thought you were coming up. Anyone? Anyone else? Will, did you want to come, you asked to come back up? Did I understand it correctly? Were they? Yeah, I think you want to talk to Lorraine before they do anything else, so.
Yeah, I have questions.
Well, you, you're gonna, you, you want.
Whatever y'all want.
Let's bring Lorraine up first. Lorraine, come on, come on up.
I got a question for you, Lorraine. What is the maximum possible density with the R three?
I believe, uh, we sat on here, um. Actually, it's in that report. In my office. You know, on this report, you have this report.
No, I, I got just the appeal letters and then the planning commission stuff.
Seven?
Well, that's, that's what the land use plan says. Single to ma, medium and they.
Yeah, the medium is up to seven.
But that, that's not what the zoning, that's just the land use plan. I wonder what the maximum density is. R three D compared to the maximum density. R three, multi-family.
Right here, Joey Engel asked for clarification on density in different zones. They are as follows, R three, single family. It's six units per acre. R two, three to five units per acre. R three duplex, seven units per acre. Sorry, but it was right here.
Just pull up the screen so we can look at it.
Yeah, sure.
I guess that, that the point I want to make there, if we got five acres, I'm zoning single family. They could do thirty. Rezone it to R three D, they could do thirty-five. Five unit whole difference. If we just go with the five acres, it doesn't.
It was number, number C.
That doesn't include taking out any land for streets. Or anything like that, so. People might be concerned about the density of R three D, but would they be concerned about the density of single family? There's one difference per acre. If we got five acres, five units. So that's, I just want to try to make that clear. If we do rezone it, let's say this gentleman doesn't. Go with this developer, he sells it. Next developer says, hey, I'm getting the maximum number of units per acre. I'm getting seven per acre. I'm getting thirty-five versus twenty-six. The person wanted twenty-six, but I think we need to take into account that up to thirty-five could be put out there. If they met the requirements for setbacks and utilities and streets and everything, which we don't know that until they actually know that infrastructure. Does that make sense?
Yeah, basically you're saying single family can build six units an acre, R three D. You said you guys are the developer.
Uh, yeah, we.
How many lots do you have left?
Uh, right now, we, uh. About eight.
Is it all slept in the whole neighborhood?
Uh, yeah, I think we're the only ones left actually developed. That are finishing up, but they're pretty well done.
Live in that neighborhood?
No.
But he did say that it's gonna take about an acre for the road and the cul-de-sac.
Yeah, for the fire truck, so, yeah, so that, yeah.
You're down to four acres and I don't think, Darren, I don't think. Any, any way you did that, that you're gonna be able to change that with the road. And a cul-de-sac into there, you're not gonna be able to change the amount of. I mean, you're gonna be looking at four acres. Versus five. Once you take the road and the cul-de-sac in there, that takes, like I said, it takes about approximately an acre, so you're looking at down to four acres.
So it's twenty-four versus twenty-eight lots, basically twenty-four single family, twenty-eight duplex.
Look at the maximum, so they.
Yeah, that's a lot.
I believe they were proposing twenty-six.
So they're right at the maximum.
What did you tell them, planning commission? I mean, I. I think this is, on there, we can ask some of the residents, what would you like to see in the area? Just curious, like if this doesn't work, what are some suggestions?
I think somebody would buy that five acres and put a single family home on it. Five acres in town, she would pay money for that. I agree.
Yeah, how about a park in Centerton that's like gated, safe, a library, a library. And I know a lot of. Going in there, I just want the roads fixed before that.
So that, that, and that's where I was gonna go next. I would say that's one of the things that I would point out is. We lay foundations of things. We have to have the roads to support. I mean, I don't care about the, the numbers, yes, but people driving in grass and things like that. I don't know if that's.
I mean, two se, one, excuse me, it's. Classification is Vaughn Road, not two seventy-nine. I know it, it is Highway two seventy-nine, but it's Vaughn Road. The city has put a lot of pressure, not just the city, but the county. Bentonville, the airport, everybody is putting a lot of pressure on the highway departments and developers. And, and I, I foresee that. Vaughn Road is gonna get some improvement. I mean, there's.
That could be twenty thirty.
I think it's gonna be a lot sooner than that.
Assumptions here, we're not going. This is an assumption of thought. There's no written, this plan is in action.
Oh, come on.
Comment, um, this is just coming off of. Yeah, absolutely.
So everybody can hear.
Sure, absolutely. Uh, just since we're talking about, if anyone had any questions, this comes off the master street plan of twenty twenty, also approved by the Centerton City. Um, Planning Commission, and this is where I got my information. This whole area, um, that we're looking at, the proposal for rezoning. When I looked at it, even the proposal that was planned in twenty twenty and probably isn't coming until probably more like twenty thirty. That whole area is only planned, um, as minor arterial or major collateral roadways per the master street plan. Which means none of this is really going to connect to a highway and you're still not gonna see anything more than two one-way roads. At best, you're gonna see trees separating the two one-way roads. And you can actually look it up on the master plan if you want. It shows the difference in those streetways. So even, we still won't even get like a suicide lane or like a roundabout, things like that. That's not even planned for this area. So I just think it's important to recognize that although we all agree this needs major reconstruction, it's not in the plan right now.
Suicide lane, huh?
Well, I don't know, a, a, a center turn lane.
Sounds like that's what the road is right now.
It's a suicide lane.
I would also like to add that from my research, over a hundred kids die in America walking to and from school. And these kids have to walk to school. They don't have a choice except for the ones that are across the highway in which they are still walking. It is faster for them. They don't have to sit on the bus for an hour to get across the street. They're still walking. I see it happen every single day and over a hundred kids die per year in America walking to and from school. And when they're provided bus service, that you guys are responsible for that. But only three hundred kids died from the year two thousand nine to the year two thousand sixteen. So we're talking on a bus accident. So we're talking about nine hundred kids compared to three hundred over nine years. Like it's, it's extensive how many children are dying walking to and from school and this is imperative to this community. It's imperative.
Yes, you got anything else? Can I bring Will up? Just, you got anything else? Can I bring Will back up?
No, I mean.
I'm gonna ask you a question.
Alan, where are the sidewalks?
Catherine Smith, I don't have kids in school here. We have a business, but I've come, I've lived in other places. And if we can get police to stop traffic, to get people in and out of church on Sundays, can we not get them to get our kids to school safely? I mean, this just seems so asinine to me. Why is this even a question? I mean, I don't understand, and if I had, I mean, I have grandkids that live in this town. They're not old enough to go to school yet, but obviously I don't want them to walk to school if this is what they're gonna have to deal with. I mean, I'm all for development. I mean, that's the way of the future. Every, I've lived in California.
Be smart developments.
Yes, exactly. You have to have sidewalks. This is one of the only places I've ever lived where there's no sidewalks. Do the developers just put them in the cul-de-sac so that the, the houses are on and then after that it's SOL, you know, whoever?
So that, that's what I was asking. We're on this as Alan, like we've talked about the sidewalks piece, the marsh, like we're, we're.
Alan's right here. He's ready to talk.
You gonna cover the sidewalk piece, Alan, the, obviously we'll discuss them.
Come on, come on to party. Well, that way it's being recorded.
Again, to your point, I know that we've asked, been in the school district on help with sidewalks and that was a hard no, their budget. So it comes.
You shouldn't even see a budget issue. It's, it's safety.
Only get it, school board, just telling you where that's at. So we, so guess who gets to fit the bill for a lot of that?
In a lot of other states, the developers put the sidewalks in.
Oh, here, it's, it's us footing the bill, so that's why I'm asking, where, where on there is sidewalks planned?
Plan for right now would be from the end of Bonanza. Through, uh, uh, down Fish Hatchery. To get to the Fish Hatchery property with the proper sidewalks, it's not the shoulder through the existing path of Hatchery. Though that, but that's not gonna get built before the start of next school year.
Missed only on the other side.
How about we go to the map and just kind of, can you kind of outline it right there or something? Yeah, I mean, I'm just saying.
There's nothing over here at all with the side. So. That means also have sidewalk, well, sidewalk, but there's nothing indoor, that is Tamron.
Right.
We are not allowed to build on Vaughn Road because, so all along by the state, oh, what happened?
I think what you're trying to do right there.
That's it, right there.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly what we're talking about. That's, that's, that's what I'm saying forward.
But what's, we're working on now is this route here because this one is that needs a safer route. The other one, they have the option to bus. I understand it's horrible to get there, but we can't do much. So this one's gonna connect the existence out of the Bonanza to get it across to the Fish Hatchery where there's this, the existing, uh, safe path to the school. Um, this isn't gonna be built until, before the start of next school year. Because getting this built, we have to go through multiple permits. We have to go through both the Army Corps or the, uh, wetlands as well as blood permits based on the natural spring here.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was. The only thing that are slowing it down? The permits are the only thing that's slowing it down?
Uh, we haven't gotten a agreement. We still have to get a agreement with engineering firm to design it. Uh, cost was higher than was anticipated, so we are still negotiating that cost.
Did you, did you not run that as a NASB build? That, that's where I'm going with that. That's what I'm saying. I mean, until we have something like that that works, I, I just don't know that it's a viable option. I mean, and I trust our planning commission to do what they're entitled to do.
Saying, no, I can't build it and just doing that, build, build up the permitting needed. We're gonna, we have to follow certain rules for doing that. We can't just have, get it done and go back and get it later. It has to have all prepped beforehand. Won't take long to build those to get to that point, but because of the way the permits need to go through and be processed. Highly unlikely this is gonna be built before the start of next school year.
So until that happens, is there gonna be Centerton PD sitting on that road, making sure that people?
I think that's, no, I don't disagree. I think that's just part of it.
This is nowhere near. This doesn't impact the, uh, Bush River Plaza.
This isn't this. I was just asking about the whole.
I'm just asking in general, because I've actually gone down that road when school's in session and I have waited in line behind the people waiting to get their kids. To get to the airport. I would never consider driving in the ditch to get around. A, a school line and it's just asinine to me that we allow this to happen in our city.
Hey, go to school.
There's in Bella Vista, the police department does on some of the, I think it's Cooper, at least they used to. They would, um, watch for kids cross, like that. So I think that's a great point. I'm not sure if that's relevant right now, but it's something that we should be looking at.
But in my meeting with the planning commission and the police, they said that because it's a highway. That they cannot stop traffic on that road and direct traffic and because there's no crosswalk. So I've asked the police that question and that's my, that's the response that I got. And direct traffic and because there's no crosswalk. So I've asked the police that question and that's my, that's the response that I got.
Thank you.
Hey, Will, you back here? Somewhere, come come back up.
Few uh short comments, because I know we've been looking at this for a while. Um, I wanna harp on the fact again that this is. Seven units per acre max. If it were even possible to get thirty five units on there, which I don't think it is, it's thirty five units. When the developers of Tamarin subdivision came in, they came out here and said, we're gonna plop down three hundred units. Right?
Yeah.
So they came out and they said, we're going to plop three hundred units right down here in the middle of the country. And then they all came in and we're asking for thirty five. And they don't want it. Um, it's a. Density that is slightly higher. One unit an acre, in fact. Higher than the zoning that they have. And and to me, what all of this says is, it's okay that we've come out here, but we don't want anyone else. And I suspect, I can't confirm because you don't know. But if we were requesting that this be zoned R two, I suspect there'd be a lot less fanfare. So. That's all I've got. Um. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm gonna add to his comment, because he said at the very end, you said that this was R two. Can you pull up the map? Because actually, three of the sides are R two. So is there a reason that you're not pursuing R two? It's just to get more units on that that property, that five acres? Is that what it is? Because when I look at it, I think, okay, well, we're we're surrounded pretty much by R two, so we've got a little bit of pocket here. But we've got R two.
So. There is R three just right down the road. There's R R three D right just to the north on the other side of Tamarind and there's R four M F. So. We also have P U D is having units an acre just to the east of it. So that doesn't really answer your question, but I I do think there's compatible zoning nearby. But to answer your question more specifically. Um, the topography and water characteristics of this lot make it a challenge to build on. Um, and we're asking for a little bit more density so we can get a comparable density to everything around us. If we requested R two, it's likely would end up at a a much lower density. Than the neighborhoods that surround us. So I again, I I know that there's always this question of what happens if someone else buys it. But it is my opinion and the engineer's opinion that you really cannot fit more than five to six units an acre on this, which is. Pretty similar to what's around it. So.
Was there ever, I mean, just curious, because I know that's been a lot of feedback of single family. Was there ever a a path on that or is it just been duplex the whole way? I mean, you know, I I I have to listen to. This is too. So I'm I'm just curious, like what else is, what other plans have been through planning or is that the only one duplex?
Uh, I can't speak to that. George is. Is this the only rezoning of the question? So you submitted.
Yeah, uh. Four weeks, I don't know where the property. Uh, I've been here for twelve years. There wasn't a house in Tamarind. Moved there. We've got a buyer. He's he's very dedicated to. He wants the property, he wants to develop it. Uh, he wants him in property, I think, in for his retirement. Uh, selling gives me everything. He wants, he's, I've got a buyer in hand that wants to do like. He doesn't want, it's not cost effective to build. On a five acre, five acre to develop five acres. It's really not cost effective. Lots would be too expensive. Build a single family. So you've got to have something there that's gonna make it worthwhile. To develop five acres. Like I said, an acre of it is just a street up to build the colors. Now, that's about all he can do. I I wished he just wanted to build one house on it. That's not very cost effective either. That's that's all he can do. We've got a buyer. He stayed hooked because he really wants a property. He's he tend to build a higher end, nice duplexes in there.
And it Councilman Cowgar, I I expect you to listen to you. To, I think that safety of children walking to school is important, and I think that. Um, it probably is congested out there. I don't live out there. It sounds bad. I don't expect to. Completely put aside and ignore what all these people are saying, but. Um, what I am asking is is for y'all to put this in perspective and realize that it's. Tamarind is three hundred houses. They all, some of them have teenagers, that's two cars per house. Some of them have three or four cars. That's a bunch of cars. That's a bunch of traffic. This is a drop in the bucket. I mean, it it truly is, and that's that's the point of my speech that I was trying to get across is that. The density is the same, the traffic is a drop in the bucket, and really what it look, what it boils down to is. Is this a compatible housing type? Because everything else is basically the same. Um, and I and I think that it is.
You have any other questions for Will? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, so. With that. It's with that. If you, when we. When when we vote. Or when you vote, I'm sorry. When when you vote, if you vote yes. On this ordinance and your vote no, turn. The uh recommendation of the planning commission, if you vote no, and you're upholding the recommendation of the planning commission, is that right, Brian? Because this is approving it. But if they vote no, then they're basically staying with the planning commission said. Do you agree?
So I I I think a a yes vote approves the ordinance and approves the. Division, a no vote. Would do the opposite.
Yeah, which is upholding the planning commission.
Okay, right.
I just wanna make sure I'm staying.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So so if you vote yes for this ordinance, you're over, you're vote override the planning commission. You're voting to allow, you know, to rezone this property. If you vote no. Then you're upholding the, you know, then you're basically upholding the planning commission's decision. And not passing the ordinance. And there's five of you, so, you know. Take three yes votes to pass it. With that, would someone like to make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty three dash zero one? We have a motion to adopt. Do we have a second? We have a second. One more time, do we have a second on ordinance twenty twenty three dash zero one? Brian, I believe it fails for lack of a second.
I agree.
All right, that's it. All right, that's it on this one.
So it's upholding the planning.
Uphold, it's uphold. Yeah, all right. So next, next is ordinance twenty twenty three. That's what, let me wait a minute, everybody. Right, so next is ordinance twenty twenty three dash. Uh, zero two. This is a property and and Kyle came up a minute ago and spoke, so he's gonna speak again. Uh, this is a property on six thirty one Bliss. Uh, the applicant's requesting to go from R T H duplex. Uh, which is already zoned that way to to medium high density. Uh, residential multi-family, R three M F. So with that, I'm gonna put the map up there while Kyle talks to you. Uh, and do y'all know where where Bliss is? It's just between Sun Meadows Drive and. I mean, this property is between Sun Meadows Drive and uh walk. On the south side of the road, it's it's less than an.
This property was also brought once before.
At nineteen, I think.
I thought it was at that.
Eighteen or nineteen, or maybe. Brett, Brian's here, he will give you the history on this. Brian's the neighbor.
Originally, it was in two thousand seventeen, the planning commission. Thought it down. Two thousand eight eighteen, they came back with the second zone. Um, again, the planning commission shut. They appealed to the city council, the city council overrode. How we got to the duplexes that are the townhouses that are there now. The zone, I think that the developer had construction related issues that couldn't facilitate it, make it profitable, so. Here we are.
I, Kyle did write you a letter, uh, you know, explaining why he felt like uh the planning commission voted in error. But if you wanna go ahead and summarize what you what you wrote to him?
Yeah. I do, yeah, appreciate the opportunity to come and present this to the city council today. Um. And so just, I just wanna run through the letter that I was sent and the responses that I have to it. Um. So six thirty one Bliss Street, we're looking to build more guy family, uh, fourplex or threeplex types units on that property. And very similar, um, with this property, it is currently zoned for R T H D, which would allow us to build duplexes, but due to the size of the property, point nine seven acres, the. Layout of the property and the road that we need to put in and the fire truck turnaround we need to put in and the retention pond we need to put in. But the current R T H D zoning would not be able to put up to the eight that should exist on that property. And the R T H zoning already exists. And so our solution with the planning committee was to change that to an R three M F zoning. Which allows us to build in a format of fourplexes or threeplexes that allow us to fit. Seven units on the property. So when you look at the R T H D and the R three M F, the density is actually exactly the same as eight units per acre. So we're not looking to add any more additional units. There's no change to the depth. Um, and so I'll just read through some of the fact findings from the the council that we spoke to last time. Um, they found that the rezoning consistent was not consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan. Um, the planning commission agreed that the proposed density is higher than the density designated and that used plans, so went to discussion twenty nineteen with the R T H D zoning request. Again, the R T H D density and even this is exactly. R three M F, it's eight units per acre, no matter which one you go. And that's my, that's my response to that, is that the zoning is consistent because it's the exact same number of units per acre. Um, according to the staff overview, uh, the zoning is consistent. Well, R three M F allows, this is their words, well, R three M F allows up to eight units per acre, staff does not anticipate seeing eight units developed in this lot due to drainage and access requirements. Um, I'll read this part, I won't read it again, because it's the same response for several. Uh, the parcel is designated low, medium density to the comprehensive plan with an overall density of three to seven units per acre. So while not consistent, the proposed rezon is also is close in proposed maximum density. The parcel located on Bliss Street is a major collector. The reason on request does meet the comprehensive land that use goals for info. And then I just jumped on the maps here and just some, some, I guess, numbers for. To help us understand this as well as within a one third mile radius of this property. Um, again, the fact or the commission decided that it wasn't consistent with the with the zoning in the area. Um, within this seventeen hundred square or seventeen hundred radius of the property. Uh, twenty four percent of the acreage is L U P key medium high density residential, which is multifamily. Within that same seventeen hundred square foot radius, the approximate, approximately one third of a mile. Uh, seventeen percent is in use, construction or planned for multifamily duplexes and forty one percent of the total area within that seventeen hundred foot radius. Forty one percent of the total area is medium high density residential M H D R. Um, and or planned in use for multifamily. So just in response to there, that's not consistent, forty one percent of the area surrounding it's. The same zone. Uh, fact finding two, is the proposed rezon compatible with the surrounding area and zones? No, they said, again. Um, I won't read the the staff's comments on this. The staff agrees that it is compatible, yes. Um, and then again, same same statistics here with a couple of, so thirty two, thirty two parcels within that same seventeen hundred radius, seventeen hundred square foot radius. Thirty two parcels are zoned R three D. That's thirty nine point three five acres. Um, two point two four acres are zoned R four M F, which is significantly higher, as is R three D. Uh, four D parcels are zoned R three M F, which is what I'm requesting for, and this is within a two hundred and fifty acre area. Are zoned um for R three M F already, that's sixteen point five eight acres. Um, and again, the same statistic here, that forty one percent of total area is already zoned for medium high density, so it does meet the uh. Does meet the zoning requirements. Uh, fact finding three. Would all the permitted uses in the new zone be compatible with the locations surrounding areas? Uh, this was mixed back from the planning committee. Uh, there's discussion about the lack of similar multifamily in the area, uh, though the commission acknowledges duplexes nearby. There's discussion about the number of units being proposed for the size. I just wanna clear up some confusion that was on this one about during our initial meeting. Um, some of the members were under the impression that they were able to be up to twelve units built on this lot because R three M F, that's not the case. It's eight, just like the R T H D. So I think that was. One of the things that drove some confusion to denial of this was that they thought it could do twelve units, but can actually only do eight, which is exactly the same as the R T H D. Uh, they found that the rezoning would benefit me and not anybody else. Um. Again, I have a few notes on that. The current value of the current annual property revenue tax for the property. Um, is about two hundred eighty seven dollars. When we rezone it and build on it, it'll be over five thousand dollars. Uh, adding revenue to the city and also according to the Joint Center of Housing Studies at Harvard, the homes. That are not located in multifamily areas appreciated an average annual rate of three point five nine percent between eighteen nineteen eighty seven and nineteen ninety seven compared to a higher appreciation. Of three point nine six percent for houses near multifamily buildings. And so just again, when we talk about concerns about affordability and housing prices coming down or going up, we know that's not the case. Um, as you're closer to multifamily, your property values actually go up at a higher rate. Um, fact finding five, uh. Through the public pos, there are several opinions from the public about this, and I I live here too, and so I wanna make sure that, you know, we address these issues as well, but. Uh, one, traffic. I shared this earlier as well. Uh, the exact statistics are with a single family detached on a weekday, you have nine point five seven trips per housing unit. At an apartment or a duplex, you have six point two seven forty percent lower. In the peak A M hours, you're forty percent lower, and the P P M hours, you're fifty two percent lower. Saturday, you're fifty eight percent lower, peak hour, you're eighty one percent lower. Sunday, you're fifty percent lower, and peak hour of Sunday, you're sixty nine percent lower. So there's not going to be more traffic. As opposed if there were single family units on this lot, there wouldn't be more. Uh, that is all coming from, sorry, let me write that page quick.
Is that based on similar communities or?
Yes, it's a nationwide, it's a nationwide, um.
I was thinking why that's gonna include urban areas, which are people in apartments in urban areas are less likely to have cars.
Yeah, can we just, sorry, I. I think you can speak after he's done, if I'm correct, mayor.
Yeah, we'll have public, I'll open up public comment, yeah.
So, yeah, so all of these, all of these days are coming from the Joint Center for Housing Studies at Harvard University. That's the source for most of these, most of these statistics is the Joint Center for Housing Studies at Harvard University.
Harvard.
Yeah. Um, again, uh, we we believe that that this development will add value to the community. It's gonna provide affordable housing for several families that need it in this area. Um, it'll be closer to the schools, which would be good for those families as well. Um, we plan to build a high quality duplex town, townhome style. Community there, and we hope that it adds value. Um, and if if it's okay with the council, I would. Appreciate the opportunity to go and respond after public comment, if there's anything. Thank you.
Before you, does anybody have any questions for Kyle before I give you the planning commission overview?
One, one question I've got, uh, these are gonna be two story, right?
The the zoning does allow for two story, and I know that came up in public comment last time, the R T H D does allow for two story as well, as well as any. Uh, single family also allows for two story. So. Yes, it would allow for two story, but in the context of getting the zoning approved, I don't think it's gonna be. Relevant, because anybody who lives there can build two story.
There's, there's no one in the neighborhood. Around there in that, in that area that has a two story.
I I don't know. I don't know every single house in the area, but again, as far as the zoning is concerned, anyone in the area building could build a story. So again, I. I don't know if we'll build two story or if we'll build single story. I I'm I'm not sure yet, to be honest, I haven't gotten that far, but.
Have you been out to the lot? You should know that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so everybody around there.
Yeah.
Same story.
Well, the home directly in front of us, I, they're they're doing addition right now. I'm not sure if they're single or two story. There's a little farmhouse right in front of our property that might actually be two story. Um, but again, I'm not familiar with all the homes, but. Um, as far as deciding on the zoning, I think. Anyone could build a two story home, whether it be a single family or multifamily area, yeah.
Were you gonna say that?
Yeah, you were saying that it was gonna be fourplex or threeplex. I mean, you can build that two story then if they were fourplex or threeplex, correct?
So the current, so duplexes can be built as a single story or a two story. And so townhome configuration, so think of a duplex and then just add a unit to it. That's a threeplex and add a unit, it's a fourplex, right? It's just taking out the space between. And so, yes, those could be built as two story, but every single unit is a single living unit. So like, you can't have. A living unit on bottom and another living unit on top. It's a. Single living, so like you couldn't do like down the road, there's that. Um.
Yeah, come Palmer apartments.
Yeah, 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 that's that's what it's called, one and two.
Yeah. That was called, yeah.
You gotta, so like you couldn't do that on this lot. It would be, it'd be not home style, two story townhome.
Park trip in there next to each other.
We've had.
All right, back out.
Are you gonna have, what's it gonna be? Just a a one line road? Into the back of the property to get to the.
That's its landlocked. There's no, you can't, there's no way out the backside.
Yeah, it'll be, you know, one road. So from what we know so far, we either put. One road on the side. Or one road down the middle. And so again, kind of the the thought process there is that if we put one road down the middle, that'll take up enough space that we can build duplex. And again, it's kind of the same duplexes or fourplexes on both sides of that street. To allow us to put the full seven units on the street, or full seven units on the acre. Um, because of the retention pond and everything else, and and the fire truck turnaround, so.
The question, and you kind of alluded to, you're gonna have to have a cul-de-sac at the back of it.
Yeah.
So. And I know exactly where the property is because there. If my understanding is right, my memory. And you live there, there used to be a trailer house on the property, right?
It was a daycare one.
Yes. Yes, yes.
Double Y trailer.
Wasn't the trailer, wasn't, I don't think it was a double Y. I think it was.
It was a trailer house and.
If, if that were to be the case.
Yeah. What I'm getting at is you're looking at, at the back of the property, you're looking at a cul-de-sac of a hundred and twenty feet.
It, it could be, or it could be a fire truck turnaround. I, I don't.
Way it's gonna have to be.
There's gotta be a turnaround, yeah.
It's gonna have to be, that's gonna take a lot of rest. And you're still thinking on, what is this, what acreage?
Point nine one.
It's still there on screen.
Nine seven, sorry.
Thinking that you can get that much when you take about at least a half acre out for road and a cul-de-sac.
Yeah, and so the, I, I don't know if we'll be able to from, from the engineers and the planning committee I talked to, they think it's possible to get seven units on there than what like number is six total.
What is the distance between that you're looking at between units?
The zoning calls for ten, I have the zoning pulled up here. So the zoning on both the RTHD and the do you want to grab my computer? I guess I'll pull up the zoning. Either twenty, it's twenty feet to the back fence and ten feet between each unit. On the RTHD, I believe it's ten feet between each building. And again, so the, the purpose would be to take that ten feet out and that'll allow us to have one more additional unit on the property as opposed to doing duplexes. And so going from maybe four or five units of duplexes to five or six units.
You got a setback on the front.
Yes, thirty-five.
Also got a setback. I think it's, I'm thinking it's twenty-five feet.
Yeah, so Bliss is a main collector. And so, yeah, there's a significant setback to the front. So again, it's very constrained space, which is why we're looking to go from RTHD to this R three MF, because then we'll be able to fit the units we want to fit on there. Density again doesn't change. It's just the fact that the land and main collector that's on, there's a lot of utility easements. Was mentioned before, I think the main reason they didn't develop the property before was because there was no way to connect sewer. And we put in a lot of work to find a way to use existing easements and gotten approvals from the city to put in a sewer, including a T cut through Bliss that allows to connect to sewer and several other existing options.
I think it's gonna be really tight to get what you're asking. I'm personally, I don't, I don't think it is, and I, I really don't like, especially if they're two story, getting them that close together because I am also on the fire department and I do not like buildings that close together due to the fact that if, if you have a fire and you have as as one of our neighboring cities found, when you have a fire and a high wind, it takes out the whole subdivision. So, because there's no way to stop it.
Yeah, I mean, oh, oh, I'm not, I'm not an engineer. I'm not, I'm not in the fire. I don't, I don't understand those things as well, but what I do know is that what we would build it to is the code in the zoning that's in, on the books here in Centerton. And that's, again, I think if, if you know, you go from a duplex to a four plex, again, the main thing is to get some of that footage back so we can fit five or six units as opposed to two or four, well, four, I think it'd be like four. Because this is only a duplex configuration, it would be either four, but with the three plex or four plex, we could maybe get to six or seven. And so again, even with the four plex. All of those units are, right, they're all connected in one of the town home configuration. And so I, I don't see how that would add any extra risk as opposed to like a pomeroy down the street or or the other duplexes that are built down the street that have the same spacing between those.
More questions for him before we.
I just asked him about Paul and the, just the code, the fire, the code and everything.
Paul here?
Yeah.
But I mean.
Hey, Paul, you here?
Welcome, Paul.
Paul's here, we might as well bring him up. Matt's here too, right? Somewhere. I don't need Matt. Okay, no, that's fine. That's fine.
So this site plan can if they do it with almost no margin of error to meet the fire code, it is that tight and it is going to be extremely difficult to meet that. I mean, if they're off the slightest bit, it's not gonna work. It's not gonna meet the code due to the distance. Because it is so narrow and so long, that's what we're running into.
And I do know there's a road on the west side, but that does not.
It's not that.
It's not a, it's not a public road, so, so I'm sure you won't get access to it. I know that, I know that. I know that you won't get access to it. So I, I, I don't believe you, Will, from a previous time we were here.
I just got a new conclusion, Mike, as soon as I, I understand there's, there's a lot of, lots of things that maybe I don't understand with fire code and whatnot as well. But I think what it really boils down to is that RTHD, R three MF are the exact same density per acre. And the only reason we're moving from RTHD to R three MF is because it'll allow us to put more units on there to meet that density that's already existing. And so because of the constraints of the land and things like that, we're, we're actually not asking for an increase in density. We're just asking permission to build more units next to each other. Thank you.
So I'll give you guys an overview of the meeting. Actually, there were a couple of you there. No, she was there and Amy was at that meeting and I was, well, because I got all of them. But, um.
Question on, for you, what's the yellow land behind it? The landlock, like what's that?
That's Brian's property, right? That belongs to Brian. It's not landlock. He's got access.
It's a residential, single, single family.
Yeah, I think it's R one.
Acres do you have with that?
I have an acre and a half. With it, okay, with the, yeah.
That's R one, right? I thought it was.
Thanks.
Yeah, sure. All right. So, so there was, you know, there was a public hearing there. There was four folk, four people spoke in opposition of it. A lot of concern was, you know, a lot of it was the fire access. You know, how's a fire truck gonna get in and get back out? You know, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking of, you know, especially if it was two story, I'm thinking of our ladder truck getting back in there and how do you get, it's longer than the other ones. How do you get that back out on that narrow road? So that was kind of it, general vehicle access because, and parking, because we really wanted a lot there to work with. But then, you know, they come to the vote of the planning commission. And the five questions is the rezone consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan? They all agreed that the rezone is not consistent with the comprehensive plan due to the density. Is proposed rezone compatible with the surrounding areas? They advised the proposed rezone is not compatible with the surrounding area, surrounding area is all single family. Would all the permitted uses in the new zone be compatible with the location surrounding area? And and then the, the staff and also Brian did remind the planning commission that they cannot consider ownership during this rezone. And only use of the land. Jeff stated if ownership was not considered, the permitted uses could be considered compatible. There was a discussion regarding the lack of similar zoning in the area and whether the size of the lot was sufficient size for the proposed lot. And next, would the rezoning provide a benefit to this landowner but not be considered for other? Jeff Safar, who is the chairman of the planning commission. He noted that because the applicant stated the rezone would allow for some efficiency that would benefit them. This rezone would be beneficial to the landowner. And then if the public is opposed, why? Any objection based on factual information? The public presented and via email were opposed to the rezone due to traffic and road concerns, property value concerns and privacy concerns. No facts were presented other than the excerpts from the comprehensive plan. Joey also, one of the planning commissions added that M three the most, mainly four plex calls for three thousand square foot per unit. RTHD called for four thousand square foot per unit. Did you take them? They had no other questions. They took a vote and the the planning commission unanimously voted against the result. I believe it was eight to zero. And also Brian Dearing, he's, he's here, he's, I'm sure he's gonna speak on a public comment. And his wife, they did write an email to me this morning. I did forward this to you. And I think he's gonna summarize this when he comes back up. So with that, if you have any questions, I, I did mention you were out, but I mentioned you were at that meeting too.
What, what happened the first time? It came three years ago, because it looks like it was sold in two thousand and nineteen to the original guy that sold it to Kyle.
I believe they, they came and they, I think it was R one back then, because, or R two, but they came back and they asked for the RTHD. And the planning commission denied it, but it came back to the city council. The city council overrode it.
Why?
They felt it was compatible because there is duplexes right down the street.
Well, wait, 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 that's not, wrong. That's, that's not it.
Come on up and help me and I'll just open up a comment.
The argument, argument.
I might be wrong.
Turn zoning and a proposed zoning, there was a lot of difference in.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
So that, that was my argument that might have swayed other commissioners, other councilmen.
And I will, at this point, open a public hearing. And I have a member of the public here, so I, I know you, but would you state your name and address for our?
My name is Brian Darling. I'm at six thirty-three Bliss Street. It's the property just behind the and I don't want to regurgitate everything that the, the mayor has, has said, but there's some points I think that specifically that is that the vote was unanimous first. And I just want to call out in the appeal letter from the developer, there was a really, I, I thought it was almost humorous when I read it. And it talks about, is the, is the rezoning consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan, including the adopted land use plan? And they indicate that it is, but then in their rebuttal, they actually, and this is the verbatim, what is written, the parcel is designated low to medium density on the comprehensive plan with an overall density of three to seven units per acre. So while not consistent, so they acknowledge it's not consistent. But then they go one step further. They say, while not consistent, it is close to the proposed maximum density. And I love the concept of close because when I think about this in its full entirety, as we develop a plan and here's what we're gonna build and use that plan, does that mean that the developer can use that plan and get close? Does that mean he has to use and leverage that plan as is? When the building inspector goes out there and reviews that building, does he have to get close or does he have to go by the ordinance? So I, I don't really understand the rationale of saying we're close, so that's good. He actually repeated that three times on three of the questions. That being the first with comprehensive plan. The second one, is it, is it compatible with the surrounding area? The reality is with the ordinance is he's required to send out mail, registered mail to all the immediate properties to say that he's proposing a rezone. One hundred percent of those properties are single family dwellings, one hundred percent. That's all. Third piece of it, would all of the permitted uses of the next zone of the new zone be compatible in this location and the surrounding and, excuse me, would all of the give me a moment, would all of the permitted uses of the new zone be compatible? Again, he voted, he indicated, yes, the planning commission did not agree. There's, really, there's two more points that I want to make, but the, talking about the, the value added to the, the fourth question was would the rezoning provide a benefit to the landowner? And he makes references property taxes, and I think we know that the city doesn't get much of that and goes to the school districts. So when we're talking about, are there any value add for the local, those communities, those houses nearby? The answer is no, not even go a step further. In the planning commission, there were about three comments that the developer made that specific members on the commission picked up on very quickly, and I think the mayor alluded to it, but he was talking about how, and I'll, I'll give these quotes. These are direct quotes from the developer. It says move, say a move from RTHD duplexes to R three MF would build four plexes and would allow us to put a few more units on the land and use it a little bit better. So he's, the reality is he just wants to put more units on it. Second point, it says, I think the, and again, this is a, a direct quote from the developer. I think the main benefit for us is going from RTHD to R three MF is that we can do triplexes and fourplexes versus just the duplexes. So it allows us some savings in the construction. So it's, it's about money. It's saying, I want more on there and I want to get more money out of it. Says in the final statement, it says, it is a very small change, but a very effective for us because of building cost and being able to build in a way that will be beneficial for us. So it's clearly benefiting them and that's it. The final thing I want to do is, is make one point. It came out of the plan as well, and specifically around area three where this property resides, and I'll read it verbatim. Says this, and this is about the land use, says this area should include low to medium density residential infill to accommodate both attached and detached housing units. This will help maintain, this will help maintain the desired character of the existing single family neighborhoods while providing slightly higher density. In essence, the community, the, the neighborhood is developed. There's very little infill left. But this zone, this proposed zone is inconsistent with what's already there. It's just that simple. That's all I have. Thank you.
You guys have a public comment? I'm sorry. Did you want to come on up?
Anybody that would like to come up, feel free to, to come up to the podium.
Before you start, you're gonna say your name and address. No, when, when you come up. Now we're recording and we've run it in the minutes.
Eddie Franklin. Six oh one Walker Street. Okay, two things I have. And I'm not nearly as prepared as Brian was. Mine's just coming up. One is the amount of traffic that is like going. Yes, it's, it may just seem like a, like, yeah, the street. It can get very, very busy and like they had alluded earlier as far as like with the kids. Because we've seen and they have their lights flashing and think they go right around. So it's like, wait a minute. We have a whole bunch, more vehicles. The other thing I have is the fire department. This, the, what happens if how, how on earth can they possibly, because I'm on Walker and they're not supposed to supposedly mark on the street, but anyway, it's another thing. The, the fire trucks are big enough and how on earth, when you think about it, how are they gonna come down there and do all their stuff? They still have to think about, how am I gonna get out of here? Beep beep, not good. So that's one thing, it's not. I'm totally totally, totally against it. Thanks.
Anyone else?
Y'all know my name yet?
We've already stated first.
Thank you, Chris LePenny, Patino and Anderson. I just want to just briefly say, I, I work in data. I have worked in data for twenty-five years. I've heard so many statistics thrown around, thrown around in these meetings, and I just encourage y'all to please ask where those statistics are coming from and not just the source, but what's the actual study? Because I have personally gone against developers in previous years that were using statistics based on urban communities, and we are not an urban community. We are a rural slash suburban community. So statistics that might work nationwide do not work here in Centerton. So I just encourage y'all to please make sure you're reflecting those statistics.
How, did you want to come back up, you said?
Yeah.
Come on.
I think the good news is no matter what happens, I've got great neighbors. I like all of them so far. They're, they're nice people. This is the good thing. You know, we live in a great community. Again, just to reiterate, reiterate a few points. I understand the questions that have been brought up about fire truck turnarounds and all these things. We will build based on the code that exists, we'll build within those guidelines and make sure that it is safe, that required and will be approved by type of building inspection that comes in. So when we talk about zoning, I don't think that those should be completely relevant to the question of if the zone should be approved or not. I think this is a problem we ran into in the prior meeting as well as we're talking about the zoning and building to a zoning spec. And if we do that, it will be within the guidelines that meet the requirements for the fire department, for all of those things. And so I don't see that as being a reasonable objection. It's also not, it isn't a requirement for this thing. Love your comment. I also working. I think this is public record. I also provided all of the statistics and sources for every statistic that I use. And so if you go online and pull that up to see where all this has come from, because we're part of this community, we want, we want it to be good, right? We don't want to cause problems. And then just to reiterate, reiterate again on, on floor resources and traffic. The, the buildings that we're going to put in will actually reduce the traffic, whether it'll be less traffic than we put in single families, single family homes. It would be less kids in the school system that we put in single families. They're actually using fewer resources and providing higher values to the community. A few comments with regards to, to Mr. Arling's comments as well. Yes, absolutely. We want to rezone because it provides a benefit to us, meaning we can put the number of units on the land that the zoning allows. RTHD allows for seven units, RTH R three MF allows for seven units. And when we do that, it only allows to about six units. So yes, it's a benefit, but I don't think it's fair or accurate to say it's only a benefit to myself again because of.
Yes, it's a benefit, but I don't think it's fair or accurate to say it's only a benefit to myself, again, because of taxes. Uh, bringing jobs the area affordable places for people to live. All those things are good. Putting tax dollars into our schools, I don't think is a bad thing either. Um, and just to, to one comment specifically, um. I actually did not write the points one A, B, C, D. Those are actually from the, uh. Planning staff. And so when Mr. Darling read point B, the parcel is designated low, medium density on the comprehensive plan with an overall density of three to seven units per acre. So while not consistent, the proposed rezone is close to. Density. Again, that's exactly, you hit that one. That's exactly what we're trying to show. We're close to the density and because of the restrictions of the land, we can't build more than what's already there, being that seven. And so again, we, we fit perfectly into that zoning requirement. So. Last, last thought here, when, when we look at just the zoning requirements as required for a rezone request, this property ticks all the boxes. It is the correct density. We can build it appropriately, and that's exactly why I went from RTHD to RT, excuse me, R three MF. And so. We, we hope that when we look at just those facts that are required for zoning, it'll hopefully draw a better vote from this council than the last one, but we appreciate your time.
Hey, council, you have any more questions before we? With that, this is like on the last one. If it gets adopted, uh, if you vote yes, then you're voting basically to override, uh, the planning commission and approve this rezone. If you don't know, then you're, you know, upholding the commission's decision. So with that, with something like make motion to, uh, adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero two. Second call, something like making motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three to zero two. The third final call, something like make motion to adopt the order is twenty twenty-three to zero two. At this point.
I agree.
Okay. All right, thank you. It's basically uphold the planning commission's decision. All right. All right, next is ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero three. Uh, this is rezoning property. Properties LLC, agriculture A one, the highway commercial C two. Uh, we've seen this one before. Uh, this was actually approved by the council, uh. And I'll get to date in a minute. Uh, this property is a three all one greenhouse road, uh, which is just south of the watercolors apartments, and there it is highlighted. And again, it was approved. You know, with ordinance twenty twenty-two to seventy-six, however, the applicant, you know, provides the correct legal description, but the wrong, uh. Uh, exhibit. So it had to come back through the planning commission, which it did. Uh, another public hearing was held. There was no comments at that public hearing. And, and then when the, uh. Playing commission voted, uh, they voted it was consistent with the land use plan. It is compatible. Uh, in all benefits, there was no benefit to anyone and, uh. There was no public comments today, vote eight to, eight to zero to forward it back to the city council for approval. So that, has anybody got any questions on this?
All we're doing is fixing the correct title.
Ba- basically just re, reapproving it, the correct exhibit.
This is right there across from kind of the Carpona building, right? Opposite of the marsh area in greenhouse.
Yeah, it's, it's. Just south, yes. Something like make motion to adopt the ordinance twenty twenty-three to zero three. Motion in a second. Broken, oh, well, I'm, I'm, read it by title, sorry. I should have had you read it by title first, then adopt. Sorry about that.
Save sentence in order to summer two thousand twenty-three to zero three and ordinance, amendment ordinance two thousand twenty-two to seven six. Rezone certain lands within the sentencing limits belonging to Skyline Properties LLC. From agriculture A one to highway commercial C two.
And we already, is your motion still standing?
It'll stand.
Your second still stand, Justin? On this?
Uh, yes.
Roll call.
Darren Warren.
Yes.
Jesse Reed.
Yes.
Keith Higgins. Justin Cowver.
Yes.
All right, this next property, which is the one we're all been waiting for. This is rezoned twenty, twenty twenty-three to zero four. This is rezoning, uh, property belongs to Tony Steele, uh, from. Residential, medium high, or medium density residential R two to no neighborhood commercial C three. Uh, there was a public hearing held at the, uh, last planning commission meeting. Uh, there was, uh, I counted eight folks who spoke in opposition to this. Uh, the concerns that were stated, uh, one, one resident. Uh, was concerned about hazard material doing, due to living directly across the street from this location. Also concerned with crap, traffic, they, there is a lot of traffic in the area and the storage of the fuel. Okay, uh, ask about the gas station, the, the proposed gas station. Uh, that was supposed to go to the north. That was brought up in the meeting and that development is actually on hold. That, that was a concept. It was a planned unit development. The city has not received any plans at all for that. That was just a plan to develop, but they were going to put a. A gas station, they were going to move the daycare, they were going to community center, I believe. Uh, they were going to put storage units back there also in the back corner. Uh, and, but apparently that project is currently on hold, uh, due to the financial issues, what they, they said in the meeting. But I wanted to, you know, announce that because that was, uh, or let the council know because that was approved. Several months ago, but probably less, about a year ago now was. Uh, there was a concern that we have five gas stations. We don't need anymore. Actually, we have four and they are all, all one oh two. But this would make gas station number five. Uh, you know, the, uh, and I believe they did state that this is designated. Is designated C three on the comprehensive plan. Uh, there was concerns about home values, traffic, financial investments, smells. From the gas station and trash. Another one was concerned about the infrastructure was approved. There's a lot of traffic on O two B. Uh, one of the commissioners did state though, without development, didn't know it, there's no infrastructure upgrades. Uh, because we, a lot of developers do upgrade the infrastructure when they build. Uh, there was another resident who he actually spoke, uh, tonight. It is hard to get in and out of his house on Towny Road and, and he mentioned it in public comments. But also he mentioned it at the planning meeting also. And then there was, uh, Cindy also spoke, uh, about getting out of her house too across the street. So. So we've actually had two comments on that same issue. Uh. Ask about the cost of table in this for six months to a year. Uh. Then another resident said when they bought their property, they were sure it was going to stay R two and nothing else was coming. That was three years ago. Uh, does not, does not feel.
That's, that's not even.
I, I'm just telling you what the comments were. Uh, I want to make sure that the public made the comments. I want to make sure that you're aware what the public said. Uh, and they'll be in a minutes too. I just, we just don't have yet because we're not tight. There was this last week's meeting. Uh, does not feel this is the right place for the project. Uh, was asking to verify that nothing else was decided. Uh, Joey said they can look at the minutes. And I guess they were probably talking about terror rose. Uh, there was a conditional use permit, uh, approved for this. And, and what the conditional use, it was, uh, by come and go, they asked to put a four thousand square foot building here. Uh, there were, my frack out. But, but there, and, and I think Alan would still look for some clarification. orientation of this building, you know, will be on the corner. Um. And when they did the condition use, uh, I, I want to say too, the city does not have any plans submitted for this. The only thing we have is a conditional use permit. It was proved. We don't have, you know, plans. I did, uh. I know when they were discussing, when come and go didn't speak, uh, they said on Seba Road, they will add a right turn lane. You know, to, to help, you know. Yeah, but it's on Seba Road. Uh, they also going to put ten foot sidewalks on the, there's sidewalks there now, but they're going wide into ten foot. Uh. But, uh. And, and I believe that that's all I have. Uh, oh, so now the planning commission, some of the concerns on the. When they spoke at the conditional use was lighting and they assured him that, you know, it's, it'll be down lighting. We have that same thing right here. Uh, there is a lot of landscaping proposed for, it's a lot of buffering. And where this is, there is a hundred foot tower line even back here on the back. Behind these houses, so it, it'll, it'll be quite a ways from there anyway.
Isn't it right across from the church? That Seba may.
No, it's across from the daycares.
Casa Casilla, right?
Yes, yes, so. Our daycare, yes. And then there's, there's a dumpster back there. They're going to make a screen. It may make everyone screen those dumpsters. And, uh, looking at, uh, looking at, uh. Surrounded properties, when they did ask the questions, uh. You know, they felt it was consistent because you got C three, you know, to the west here and C three to the north. Actually, two particles here. When our land use plan, it is designated to be commercial. Actually, this whole strip is up here and then, uh, across the street is doesn't, if that property ever sells, uh, I'm sure that would be, if it ever sells, I just said if. You know, that, that's also designated commercial. So, uh, the planning commission, uh. Did, uh, vote to forward this state on their, on their questionings, they said it was consistent with the land news plan. Uh, the designation neighborhood commercial screening needed and is being taken into consideration. I'm sure they'll enforce that. You know, if, if it's, you know, if the plan moves forward. Um, and like I said, they also mentioned the electric back there would be a buffer. Uh, some of the C three does service neighborhoods and they felt like it was permitted and compatible, does not, uh, benefit one landowner and. Uh, as far as actual information, they didn't have any factual information. I did, or Lorraine did, sorry. Let me put that up here on the screen. I think it's. Yeah, so, so Lorraine put this up here for, for the, and I gave you all a copy of this. It could kind of show you what, what C three is and, and also the public who's here also. You know, this is basically you for primary, uh. Convenient shopping and services such as grocery store, barber, beauty shops, laundry mats. You know, so on you, you can read that. Uh, and then some of the setbacks and then, uh. You know, it does, you know, it comes from the back. It, it shows what's allowed in C three, which is on our, it, it's in our code too, as far as schedule uses. All these things are, are allowed, and then these things below it are allowed with conditional use permits. And that, and that's why you have the conditional use, because, you know, it. For the C three designation. So with that, I don't think I have anything else, uh.
You know, one thing, I know, I know one, one of the, or. More than one of the emails was that there was, uh, gonna be traffic in and out of it twenty-four hours a day and.
Oh, I forgot they restricted.
Gas livers a day. Two heavy truck gas livers a day.
What road they're going to come in on?
It's.
Main and Townview.
It's, it's restricted from five o'clock in the morning till eleven thirty.
You know, they have to shut down eleven PM and open at five AM is what the condition was. Uh, uh, one thing I meant before you keep on, uh, on the conditional use permit. Has a conditional use permit, if they don't keep up with the conditions, the planning commission can call back. You know, put newer additional restrictions on a conditional use permit. Anyway, go ahead. I'm sorry.
The other, the other thing that I have is for the people that are talking about traffic, it's already. R two, and if they went ahead and did an R two subdivision there. There would probably be ten times as much traffic coming in and out of there as a come and go. Uh.
Cause you have a Casey's a half mile west.
Well, there's, there are people that. It's just like there's people that don't want to shop at Walmart. There's people that don't want to shop at Casey's. Uh, from what I've been told. By other people were talking to me is that Casey's. Gas is generally higher than anywhere else. And if, if you look in, in northwest Arkansas, it's probably one of the highest places to buy gas. Uh, what I've noticed in my own looking is, is that come and go is generally. Uh, between Casey's and Walmart as far as price. So the traffic. Is a, in, in my opinion, is a null issue because like I said. If they built a subdivision there, you're going to have a whole lot more traffic and it's not going to stop at eleven o'clock. And just begin at five o'clock in the morning. So it's going to be around the clock coming in and out of the subdivision. You're going to have a lot more traffic.
I think the only thing with traffic, if we want to define traffic though, is. The big semi trucks carrying the gas in. So they're either going to come. From North Main or they're going to come from one oh two up on Main Street. So we're going to have semis.
You already got it. I don't, I don't know that you can stop them. I mean, it, it is a highway.
Right. I understand that, but my thing is, yeah, we have either traffic or we're going to have semi trucks.
And you, you.
So I.
You said that there's going to be two trucks delivering a day.
So it says in there, two trucks, two, yeah, two fuel trucks a day and up to vendor deliveries a couple of times a week.
You've got your box trucks possibly for vendor deliveries. You have semi. Trucks delivering gas twice a day on Main Street where.
I think they're talking about having a car come in and everything to fill up to have to, unless they're going to have really small tanks. Because I mean, I don't think Walmart has two. And try to go into Walmart and get gas.
But it, but on here it says, the conditional is not on, it says, proposed hours are twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week.
That was proposed, but they put the condition and, and they'll have a condition against later.
And then, yes, it says. Per the narrative, fuel deliveries, anticipate twice a day.
Yeah, it's eleven now.
Yeah.
So we're already talking about issues with Main Street. We've been having this discussion for months about Main Street, getting it. Widened or sidewalks or something like that. And now we want to throw this in there.
If he's either going to do R two or he's going to go C three, R two is going to be ten times the traffic. So I would rather have less traffic. More traffic.
So you have bigger, yeah.
The emails that we received, the common thing that I read was infrastructure, infrastructure, infrastructure. We received more emails today and I'm going to be real transparent here. I, I didn't get a chance to look at all of those. I glanced through them, but I didn't really absorb them, but I felt like the, the key thing is infrastructure here. I would like to say, and I was actually at the meeting when they came and they, they reviewed this and they passed it. Um, and there was a gentleman, Brandon, that was, that was on the commission and he made a comment. Coming goes a very good company. We, we appreciate and we're thrilled that you want to come here. Think my struggle and I think his struggle is, is this location the right location?
Right, right, yes.
Should it be a seventy-two location, you know, something that's a little closer to that road? Um, so thank.
The land happens to be a bit more expensive out there, you know?
And I understand the land, you know, there's, there's the land use, you know, the owner maybe doesn't have property out of that area. But I guess coming in on, on so, on seventy-two, are, are people going to get off of seventy-two to go off on Main to get gas and then get back on seven? I don't know. Um.
How would this stress the waters?
I was just going to say to add to that. Doesn't make sense coming in a residential, having that, that, that type of mixed use. That mixed use type of, um. Company business coming in, right? Coming from other, we always want to compare ourselves to other cities. In ten years, what is that going to look like?
That was his point exactly. You know, is this, is this, what's it going to look like five years from now? What I believe he said and.
They have a shiny look on it right now, but in ten years, it's going to look a little bit different.
Do you have a question for him about the water? I want to make a comment about this traffic thing, having trucks. I live. Less than a quarter of a mile. From Seba. Or my, yeah, Main Street. You already got semi trucks going down there and making those turns. Okay? But I doubt very seriously that the come and go will ever have. More than one truck a day making a fuel delivery. Because it goes, you know, they carry seventy-five hundred gallons. They got to pump a lot of gas, diesel fuel to get seventy-five hundred gallons a day. Right? Come and go has a very good record, uh, appearance, well maintained. But my point is that. It used to be. Fifty's. The concept of design for residential communities was that you had. Neighborhood, commercial nexus. Every four to five blocks in urban areas. And half mile to three quarter mile in suburban areas. Our cities developed without those nexus. And now we got a company that wants to put one in. We're saying no. But it's good business.
It's, it's.
People who live on the north side of town will go to come and go. You're not gonna get people coming off of seventy-two.
It may be good from A and P tax standpoint, I get it, but why, why not pull on that, on a seventy-two? I mean, yeah, I'm not gonna say we haven't brought in good business, but at the same time, we're, we're very much pass through versus destination, in my view right now.
I only, I heard about, about movement to seventy-two, please take a look at the land that's there.
Maybe doesn't fit.
There is no land. Well. That could be done. We would create a lot more problems than what you got right there. And I never foresaw, I always foresaw that there would be some kind of commercial development on that corner. Always. I lived out in the house for twenty years.
As soon as that person, that, that family that lived on that corner was to sell it, I figured it was going straight commercial. And they finally decided to sell and here it is, it's going commercial.
Thanks, Bob.
Commercial's not a problem if you have the roads to handle it, because how many semis go down and have taken out the power and the, you, um, internet because they get a frigging sailboat on a semi going down this tiny two lane road.
If they follow the, if they follow the laws, they're not.
I understand that, but twice it happened and our business was down without power and internet.
I'll add to that, I did contact Arda, they don't bring them up there no more, so, and that was.
I, I, I. To begin with.
Anthony, you want to say something? Are you standing up? I didn't know.
I wasn't, and then, and the same issue comes, continues to be, you know, brought up. I think you guys really need to take into consideration what Keith said. And I'm only talking through the road perspective part of it. Yes, um, it's, the traffic's the issue, no matter what. But we have to look at what's the lesser of two evils, where it's either gonna be homes or it's gonna be a business. If homes come in, that's gonna be more detrimental to an already broken road that's there. The, the traffic is just gonna be, that amount of traffic residential is gonna be more detrimental on the road and cause more hazards than the proposed even two semis a day. Yeah, they're irritating and they're, they're slow and everything else and they do, they do just as much damage, but in comparison to one semi, two semis and a thousand cars. It's, you know, that volume of traffic brought into residential is gonna be worse off than a few semis. Um, and then you guys talk about sidewalks with these proposed projects, they are bringing sidewalks, they are improving the drainage in an area that has flooding issues. Um, those things are being improved at these developments. So it's not just, you know, it is a double edged sword, um, like I spoke with Cindy. It, it's a lost loss. Um, yes, the infrastructure's not there, but again, they have, they already have the right to build homes there. So that is a lesser of two evils, I think. Um, yes, and, but you know, these type of developments can address some of those issues you guys are bringing up.
I think what we have to look at is, does it fit? That is what we need to look at. Everything that comes up here, does it make sense? Does it fit? And what is it gonna look like in ten, fifteen years?
And, and I get that.
Thing looks good right now. It's a shiny nickel. Oh, yeah, it looks perfect. In ten years, what's it gonna look like? What's it gonna do to the home values that are around there? Everybody says, oh, it's not gonna bring home values down. I guarantee you, it brings home values down in ten, fifteen years. And what we have to look at is, does it make sense?
And I get that, and I'm just, like I said, I'm just addressing the actual structure of road and issues that deal with the road, because that's what my department is. Um, and the sidewalks and everything else, because that's our goal to add as much sidewalks and everything else. I mean, again, that's not what I was, I just wanted to address the actual traffic congestion and the size and the damage it will do to the already broken road. Is all I was.
So I'm no traffic in here, but where I live and where everybody around me lives, if they need to get fuel, they gotta get on Main Street. Go Casey's, go to one O two. But if there was a convenience store there, I could stop and then continue on downtown view, the way I go into work. So now I don't have to turn everybody back down to Main and Fourteenth. Now, if we pit the, if we said, hey, let's pick come and go out on seventy-two, I would guess the traffic that the gas truck going to go probably for come and go, maybe from the come and go at Motley, back out to the come and go on Regional Airport, and then he's gonna still come down Main Street to get to the come and go on seventy-two. We can't control probably what route they're gonna take to get gas delivered. So if we put a come and go here, or they put a come and go in seventy-two, all the delivery trucks might come down Main Street still to drop off the Ho Ho's and drop off the gas.
Who knows?
I mean, then even everybody in my neighborhood. Main Street, return north and go out to seventy-two. I don't, I mean, for me, this is gonna impact me. I drive down Seva every day. That's how I get home, how I get to work. I don't see it having that huge of an impact. If nothing else, it's gonna keep me and probably everybody else going to Casey's and creating a bottleneck there if they wanna get fuel.
Actually, the way.
It's gonna relieve certain sections, but then again, I'm not a traffic engineer, it's just.
We come down from the highway, down Walters, down Centerson Gamble, down to Seva that way.
That's on a dump truck too, though.
Oh, God, that's right.
So I mean, Darren, in, in reference to that, I mean, I don't know if you've had, but I've had a lot of people talk. And it's been mentioned in here in council rooms that we don't have any businesses that are in the neighborhoods that people can walk to. And you put a convenience store there on a highway at an intersection like this, people have a place that they can walk from the neighborhood to the store and get some of their stuff versus getting in a car. And so maybe it might take some traffic off of the road. So there's.
Right turn lane there, it's gonna actually help with traffic. Traffic gets backed up because people.
Sorry, real quick, is there alcohol sense there?
No.
We don't know. I mean, based on others, I'm sure there are.
Yeah, but can we watch that thousand feet rule though?
That doesn't, that doesn't apply for beer now and wine, it's for hard liquor, it's a thousand feet.
Anyway. Really want to get to is that you're looking at this going on the conditional use. It's really just the rezone from R two to C three is the big part. C three is the least intensive commercial use. The future land use has that entirely as commercial. So.
It's future commercial, right?
Future commercial. So if you don't do it, someone, yeah, so someone, if you're not gonna let them rezone to C three, the options are, they develop it as homes and you don't have the commercial that the future land just wants. Or they try to rezone to C one or C two, which are more intensive. Where fuel stations might be approved by right. And we can't put any stipulations on there.
Well, maybe, maybe we don't get the right turn lane, maybe we don't get the, if there's sidewalks, maybe we don't get the landscaping.
Well, I'd say almost any, depending on what they are doing for R two and all that, you know, there would be sidewalks and potential road improvements. That's all the development, because this is a six acre parcel. It goes everything from the Baton Cages to Main, that's the entire thing, Casa Casilla to the north. All that's where that future co, uh, commercial is on the future land use. And I get the conditional use, there might be disagreements on it, it's more so the rezone. If you denied, they go commercial one, and now we can't put conditionals to make it more attractive, put bigger, larger buffers in. They do the R two and then you don't have the commercial and you don't follow the future land use.
I've held a future bound use on a lot of things, so.
Yes, and your main complaint when you don't is because they take commercial and go R two. Here they're doing that. And now you're like, oh, maybe I wanna do R two, right? I think there are some negative impacts and people. But more so, I just want you to try to keep your review on this, just this is the rezone, not the conditional use that's trying to be gratified.
I, I.
That he didn't put in his report, so if I know it's not all, but I wanted to expand on that from having written part of that as well, so.
Can I say something?
Sure.
I just wanna say too, let me make in mind that, yes, we want businesses coming to Centerton, that's, I don't think that is the argument. We have to make sure it fits, it is right, but here's the bigger key that I wanna make sure that we remember. Is our citizens have emailed us that they don't want that. And I think sometimes we forget that, we start talking, you know, well, we could do this, well, we could do this, we could have a butter, a buffer. But our citizens have emailed all of us, many emails.
Most of them have been for the traffic.
That's not my point, Keith, but please listen. What I'm saying is they don't want this, it doesn't make sense for the people that are living right there. So I just wanna bring that up, that many people here who have spoke out, they don't want that. And I think we need to make sure that we remember that when we go to.
And I just wanna remind, I, I just, we've already had public comment.
Oh, I can't, okay.
Need for department heads, you wanna allow the public?
Yes, absolutely.
I mean, we've already had.
I wanted to actually, because I live right down the street from there. Um, um, my name is Kelly Wrights. Um, my, I'm sorry, I'm fifty-nine eighty North Lexington Place. So Lexi's inside, I, I wasn't expecting to talk tonight, but this has really got me riled up. Um, so Lexington Place, uh, Lexington, which is right up the street from there and this really made me, what you're saying is so true and why I'm here. And my husband and I were looking for our very first home last year, um, right last year at this time, I said absolutely not Centerton, I will not live in Centerton. It's all fast food, it's just like, that's what people think up when they think of Centerton. Well, after like our twelfth, like denied, you know, bid, because you know, we're gonna bid like crazy over, um, have that kind of money, um. We were like, you know, my real estate agent, like she convinced us and I phoned up our house, because we back to farm. It's a beautiful plot of land, it's, it's beautiful right there. And when I heard, and thank you so much, her neighbors, and she came by, and I'm so glad she did, because it's like, this is our very first house, we love it. We moved to this part because there is none of that fast food crap, there isn't that convenient, and let's be honest, come and go, doesn't matter, it's a convenience store, gas station, it does not belong where you guys wanna put it, all right, on that corner. That's the, you know, they're gonna come from like Casey's and oh, here's another, you know, it, it's, it's just gonna be, i- it just, I, I hate to, it cheapens the neighborhood, it cheapens the values. You don't see a come and go in the middle of like downtown Bentonville or like, you know, those homes over there. You know, it, it will, it will not be good for the neighborhood and yes.
What would you love to see there? Curious.
Like any, I mean, library, library, something that would serve the community that we don't.
So, so I agree with you.
I would rather have home, I would, I would rather have homes than commercial, only that compared.
I mean, the city doesn't own it, so like the city can't hold that, a, a library or something, but I mean.
Talk about library, hang on, we're gonna show you some content.
Yeah, so I have absolutely blown in the face, what you're saying is, is, well, you're like, gosh, it would be nice to have an economic development person that recruited businesses and people like, oh, you, you know, legally, there's some legalities there and how, or something like Tell Bentonville that, I'm pretty sure they knocked down houses, just to boost, but anyway. I agree. I mean, I think we need to have somebody that recruits, looks for businesses, where to put them, works with us, not just some third party company that just blows smoke, but somebody that knows our area, the suburban mentality. What makes it difficult in situations like this that I've learned, because I, I do agree with you, is at some point you have, uh, uh, somebody that owns the land and then somebody that's purchasing the land and however it's zoned, things like that. We, we can't necessarily control what they build when they buy it. The zones, that goes to the, the proper question, so for all we know, it, it could go commercial or residential. And it could go commercial, they could do something totally different, they could do a gosh, that was gonna be a terrible example. But they could put an X mark right there. I'm just saying like something, the commercial, like that, that could happen. So I think there's a lot that we don't have control on, it's the zone. Right. And, and so I think that's where it gets tricky, the houses will then at that point, point three emails that people are complaining about the roads, and so like it, right, you, you can't please everybody, but at the same point, roads are the com, the complaints we got, but you'd rather have houses, well, that.
I am also understanding that, that also doesn't make sense to me either, because I'm like, okay, how many acres is it six? Okay, how many houses can you fit on there?
I mean, I'm, I'm guessing.
Okay, so what?
Well, I'd probably say twenty-four.
So people's less cars and what's gonna be coming in and out of a come and go? I mean, because that's like in and out all day, all day. Whether they're gonna try to take a left on Main, like out onto Main from that corner, like it just doesn't, because I see that with Casey's all the time, it's so annoying, because people always try to take a left, you know, to go north on Main and I just don't see how having houses there is gonna really be more traffic than having a come and go, we're in and out all the time. And then, and then it's like, it, it's a crazy corner, you know what I'm saying? Like where people are always gonna do dangerous things, it seems like in those, you know, those, those corner gap regions, you guys see it all the time in Casey's. I'm gonna say, because like, at least with like a residential, you would have like an entrance, or, you know, I mean, there'd be like a little bit of a buffer, there'd be like the corner and then like an entrance, you, you know what I'm talking about though, right? Crazy, but anyways, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, I, I was, before we I believe Brian, Brian needs to remind you, you know, just like Justin started to allude, you, you're only voting on the rezone.
And that's correct, so you need to keep.
You might tell it, you know.
Yeah.
You need to keep that, be very cognizant of that.
Because we don't know, I look at this list, when I look at the rezonings, I look at all possible uses. Because, you know, you can rezonate and sell it.
There you go, or anything else.
Somebody put a pancake factory there, we'd all be pumped, you know, like it, it's commercial, like I, I, that's the tough part.
But that's what we do is we vote on zones, so it could come back, we can come back again in two months and vote again on a zone or something, so. Yep.
You guys got any more questions?
We got one more that wants to.
You wanna say something?
Yeah, I'm representing Steel.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't even know you were here.
Sorry.
All right, here, here, he's representing property owner, go ahead, sorry. I didn't realize.
Appreciate everybody's, uh, discussions and, uh, detailed concerns, but what I do wanna reiterate is that, uh, this is a rezone of approximately six point nine two acres. Uh, you have staff that has done detailed research, uh, what is best moving forward, what's compatible with, uh, future land uses. Uh, we are asking for a rezone to C three, which is compatible to the future land use map. Uh, it is in line with what was approved to the north of this property and to the west of this property. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer.
I didn't recognize you from the plane, I mean, sorry, I should have asked. All right. Right? Save certain ordinance number, if, if someone else is talking. Uh, city's certain ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash zero four. An ordinance to rezon certain lands within the centered state limits belonging to Tony Steel from medium to zero residential R two to neighborhood commercial C three. Someone might make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero four.
So moved.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
In a second. Roll call, Nicole.
Amy Rossett.
No, and I'm voting for the people.
Nothing counter.
No. Get a state of reason. Get a state of reason why you vote.
I'm absolutely voting for the people as well.
I'm for the people.
Yes.
Josie Reed.
No, citizens' concerns.
Darren Warren.
Yes, my land use plan.
So it failed.
So all the people that voted for traffic are gonna be.
All right, so, so next, next is ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero five. Chris Kelly's here, right? Okay, you, you don't need to come up, listen. So in this year's budget, we did approve four police officers, we're in the process of hiring four new additional officers. Uh, we do need vehicles for these officers. And Captain Kelly, Captain Kelly has located, uh, four Tahoe's, uh, they're gonna cost, uh, forty-nine, is it here, forty-nine, forty-nine thousand, four sixty-seven each. And, uh, they are available, they will be available to us in a couple of weeks and we'd like to secure those.
This is what we talked about last time, right?
Yeah, we approve these, these are in the budget, but they're, but they're over a, over the threshold, so, you know, we have to have to waive the bidding.
Some of them, does it, do they all, they all come with like some standard with Apple CarPlay that seems kind of interesting?
As far as, yeah, all I would do now to be able to get a, you know, wire or a hands free, you know, officer getting a call or whatever, like dispatch calls them, like a hands free answer.
Go through like your radios and stuff?
So, no, not the police radio, they get a call through their issued phone or whatever concern, they're able to, you know, not have to be holding a cell phone. So, no, not the police radio, they get a call through their issued phone, or whatever concern, they're able to, you know, not have to be holding a cell phone up, but as far as the options, we don't really get to pick the options, truthfully, all the police cars, even the Durangas that we recently got versus these, they're comparable options, sometimes you have like some that may come with something really weird, it may have been ordered for say a chief, you know, in Little Rock, and they decided that it won it, and then we got it, and then we just so happened to have, you know, a weird option on one of the cars or something, like, one of our Durangas has blind spot monitors, it's the only one in the entire fleet, but it's pretty far. So, um, these are just standard, um, I mean, standard models, like what we most recently bought, um, they went up in price a little bit, but I've called, uh, Smart Ford, who, who's who we purchased the explorers before, and then Red River, uh, mine down there, and there are just really no other police cars that I can find, probably got fortunate on these, cause I called a week later to actually get the invoice, and they're now sold out. So, he has our name on them, pending the outcome of this meeting, if not, I mean, no harm, no foul for him, he'll have them sold, as soon as I tell him we don't want them, but that's just what I was able to find, and it is local, um, I had a couple other leads, it just, they just fell through. And these will be, they are, uh, four-wheel drive, pursuit-rated vehicles, um, and they are all four white.
Will it match the rest of them?
Yeah, it'll match the rest. Standard options on them are gonna be aside from just, you know, basically, they'll have the spotlight and a wiring package that helps with the outfit. Other than that, they shouldn't have, they're all the Tows are package, which we really don't use unless it's just moving the speed trailers around, but, um, all that stuff, just pretty much standard on, on what these are, there shouldn't be anything answering around them at all, they shouldn't be um, standard like the most recent one that we bought.
We'll have to make a motion to waive competitive bidding.
Okay, so what he'll do, he'll read the ordinance and just adopt it. Yeah, I wanna make sure, have I got more questions for, for Captain Kelly? Counselor.
Oh, real quick, what was that? Sorry, I'm sorry, um, the price on it, cause there's.
It's forty, forty-nine, four sixty-seven.
Okay, it's the first one that's loaded here.
Yeah, and it went up a little bit, um, I think the last one we got was like forty-seven, that was the equal for a twenty-two model, but that was kind of part of our, when we bought the three for the twenty-two budget, and, you know, we kinda jumped ahead and got one that we weren't anticipating, cause we knew prices were gonna go up. Um, unfortunately, the, the price increases are, they, they've hit us, it's about, I think about two thousand difference, but we'll drive to the four-wheel drive, but, and really, it's just, it's probably better all the way around, just, uh, when we've tried to stick with the all-wheel drives, we get bad weather and such, we just don't really have to worry about, you know, not being able to get around. But I don't think, it shouldn't be, I think the V, or the, the options are listed, but it should just be everything um, standard, but even the Ford explorers, you know, much smaller sedan or SUV, they're up, if you can find them, they're up to, I think, forty-seven themselves. And according to the Smart Ford guy, he said that Little Rock is buying everything that they're getting in, it's like a hundred and fifty-something cars, and they're just kind of first come, first served, or try some out-of-state options, um, which, I mean, it makes sense, but they're how they explained it to me is, if we had a surplus, they may definitely help you if we could, they probably won't be white, they'd probably be gray, because of, that was kind of the instead, it could be white, gray, or black, that's the colors that they got, um, but they were kind of more inclined to help agencies within their state first, so we would kind of come after, they was gonna let us know first part of the month if they had anything, they would be a little bit cheaper, cause their state bid was cheaper, um, but I just, they're not able to guarantee us getting any of them, so, um, I just, the only thing that's sure that we know, um, those vehicles, that you have vendors already, um, and Superior will get those vehicles out there, yeah, so.
Four, for forty-eight.
Yeah, forty.
Forty-nine, four sixty-seven.
But yeah. Same price, same out, you know, same outfitting, um, and he was anticipating them to be here by the end of the month. And we'll go through and, you know, footing and stuff, and save that cost, kind of like what we've been doing, just to save our, the other costs, and do the self, like standard equipment, um, but I don't really have anything to add, there's pretty for the most part, um, and if y'all, and I guess kind of a little late now, but I said, like, the last one that we got, the Y one, uh, four-wheel drive, it should be identical there. But if y'all have any other questions?
Any more questions?
Counselor. Ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash zero five, Norton's waiting for requirements for the purchase of four two thousand twenty-three Chevrolet Tows from Superior Automotive, South Springs, Arkansas, the Centerton Police Department.
Someone may make motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero five.
Not much.
Motion, we have a second? Roll call, please.
Darren Warren.
Yes.
Josie Reed.
Yes.
Pagan Bottom.
Yes, ma'am.
Justin Cowherd.
Yes, ma'am.
Amy Rosette. Yes.
Alright, next is, next is ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero six. Uh, this is accepted dedication of utility easement, uh, from Alma Louie and Gonzalez, I can't say his last name, per track split.
With you?
That's it. Uh, at five fifty West Center Boulevard, which is right across the street, and Steel Steve Spit Stop, they split that property, so they're dedicating utility easement to the city. So does anybody got any questions on that?
Counselor. City of Centerton ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash zero six, an ordinance accepting dedication of utility easement by Alma Lucia and Gonzalo Acevedo.
Alma Lucia Gonzalo Acevedo.
What is that? By them.
Alma Lucia Gonzalo Acevedo.
Yeah. Per track split, that time, go ahead.
Alma Lucia Gonzalo Acevedo.
Okay, uh, someone may make motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero six.
Somebody.
Motion, second, roll call.
Amy Rosette. Yes. Beth and Counters.
Let's say, yeah.
Darren Warren.
Yes.
Alright, uh, next, is amend in the twenty twenty-two budget, Carl, you're up.
Okay, so first, before I do that, I'll apologize, cause the, uh, ratios are wrong. If you asked me about, I just looked at them, I must have been, I must have put them in and not saved them or something, so.
I made a note to go check later.
Sorry, I'm sorry, she was making mistakes, just on every time you want to say it.
So anyway, the cash liabilities in the, the assets liabilities are both ninety-seven point eighty-eight to one, ninety-seven point eighty-eight to one. And the current liquid cash liabilities is twenty-seven to one. So, if you look at, you should have a packet, the far right-hand column says budget adjustment. Now, what this is, is at the end of every fiscal year, you're required to adjust the budget to the actuals. Oh. It kind of is what it is, and it's something we have to do, um, you get some substantial budget adjustments, but going forward, we will be doing budget adjustments on a monthly basis. And we should not, yeah, we should not have
Okay.
big budget adjustments, otherwise.
So this is like, like the, um, over in the column, that's, um, are we taking that much out of?
We're taking that much out of the budget, so, for instance, on that very first sheet, that says Fire Department, where we have eight thirty-three grand income, we don't have a budget, we did not budget anything, but they had twenty-seven thousand eleven dollars worth of income, so we're increasing the budget by twenty-seven five eleven. So, that's how I, I read those. Really, all I have, guys, kind of a
Clean it up, and we have to, we do this every year.
You have to do, but you don't have a choice.
But, but he, he's all over it, he.
I like the monthly one, cause that'll keep us more on track as.
Absolutely, it'll keep you guys more tuned, or, or keep on, exactly what's going on.
I prefer that, that way, if somebody needs to increase their budget, thousands or they could change.
No. Just right before, I mean, qualify that. Budget adjustment is nine dollars, I'm not gonna probably make a nine-dollar budget adjustment, it's gonna be, it's gonna be the material budget adjustments on a monthly basis.
Anybody got questions for Carl?
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash zero seven, an ordinance amending the budget for the operation of City of Centerton, Arkansas, for the coming year, two thousand twenty-two, prepared in emergency and for other purposes.
Make motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero seven.
So moved.
Take a second, roll call.
Amy Rosette. Yes. Justin Cowherd.
Yes.
You thinking about them?
Yes, ma'am.
Josie Reed. Yes. Darren Warren.
Yes.
Section three, the City Council of the City of Centerton, Arkansas has determined that an emergency is hereby found to exist, and this ordinance being necessary for preservation of public peace, health, and safety shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and publication.
Someone may make motion to adopt the emergency clause. Second?
Say it.
Roll call. Oh. Roll call, sorry.
Alright, I missed them, who was first one?
Just a second, just a second.
And Justin, right?
Justin combo.
Darren Warren.
Yes.
Josie Reed, yes, keep thinking about them.
Yes, ma'am.
Justin Cowherd.
Yes.
Rosette, yes.
Alright, next is Resolution twenty twenty-two dash forty-seven, this was tabled from last month. Alan asked us to table, is this for, he, he had a couple little minor changes, which they are made now, and he'll give you real brief.
At the last meeting, I was gonna present the stormwater, uh, drainage manual updates. Uh, get rid of the, thinking worries in it, make it more stringent, uh, got a roll call, I can, for the meeting that an engineer wanted table. Look at, I did make two changes to what was said last month, and that's just a couple, one was, I agreed with them on for open swales, we had a ten-foot above on both sides of an open swell. It's a lot of land to lose, so lower that to, you know, ten foot for maintenance, five things bonds, and then the other one was something that's been argued about since the very first proposal, through all the planning commission meetings and everything, was HGL calc, so based on the recommendation of the planning commission, I had a note that it can be reviewed on a case-by-case uh, basis by the city engineer for approval, doesn't mean by letter. Nothing else changed from what you saw last month. So.
Questions, Ralph?
Alright, sorry, Darren.
Do we have it?
Yeah, we got corn.
Save Centerton Resolution number twenty, uh, two thousand twenty-two dash four seven. A resolution amending the Centerton Stormwater Management Drainage Manual two thousand nine, current addition of the City of Centerton, Arkansas.
Someone may make motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-two dash forty-seven.
So moved.
So, may I get a motion, you got a second?
Second.
Second by Josie? Roll call. I don't know, I don't think Darren wants to vote on this, since you are here, where you, we're just doing the drainage manual. Okay, go ahead and skip there.
Josie Reed, yes, keep thinking about them.
Yes, ma'am.
Justin Cowherd.
Yes.
Amy Rosette. Yes.
Alright, next is ordinance, Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero one. Uh, this is an interlocal agreement with the Benton County Solid Waste District, I've asked Wendy to join us. So Wendy's here to answer any questions, kind of give us, just a real brief overview of what we're trying to do.
Okay, uh, so the, the interlocal, or interagency agreement, sorry, um, is proposing to do a few things, so, as you guys know, in the, uh, past few years, the, um, district, and the, you know, the county, and the various cities had done annual agreements that would help to support the special waste drop-off program, to maintain that program, um, with the added, uh, you know, convenience locations. And so, um, after so, so many, um, discussions with the various cities and, uh, the board members, it was decided that the board would propose to the member entities that we, um, replace the fifty cent per year uh, local member contribution, which has been in place since the district formed in two thousand five, um, that we would replace that with a one dollar per person, per year, um, local member contribution has not been increased, obviously, since two thousand five, so we would increase that, um, particular funding mechanism, and that the board, um, through the interagency agreement, would dedicate those funds to the, uh, special waste programs, which include the special waste drop-off program, uh, for the large bulky items and, and that type of thing, as well as the rural recycling programs. Um, I know it has come up before about the utilization of that program. Um, in two thousand twenty-two, we had a total of fourteen thousand loads come into the three locations around the county, um, Centerton is the main facility, we have a satellite in Rogers, and then we have a very, um, part-time satellite in Asylum Springs, to all of the facilities, we had, we received fourteen thousand loads, Centerton zip code loads, so we track by zip code. Um, and sometimes that isn't exactly your city limits necessarily, obviously, but it, hopefully it's fairly close. Um, but the Centerton city limits, zip codes were fourteen hundred, uh, forty-eight of those loads, so it's about twelve point three percent of the total utilization of the program was Centerton, um, you know, citizens, and that very closely matches the population of, um, Centerton to the county, which is about twelve percent.
How much of it was Bendville?
Um, I'm sorry, I did not bring that, but theirs was about thirty, I'm sorry, the latest one that we, that I had done for them was about thirty-two percent, I think, um, of the overall program.
We didn't pay anything last year, just a reminder, they didn't pay anything last year.
They have signed already, they have signed.
I know, but they set, they set last year out, I'm still frustrated about that.
Right, no, we definitely can understand that frustration, um, so yes, they, they have already signed on to this increase, um, and to the new agreement.
I'm sorry, I just get stuck on that, what if we set a year out, what happens?
So, in the past, nothing had happened, um, you know, several, as you know, several of the cities last year chose not to participate um, in the funding of that special waste drop-off program, and so during those years, nothing happened, I think, um, and there's no guarantee that anything would happen now, but it has been discussed at every one of the last few board meetings, that it is likely that the other members that do sign on to the agreement would vote to implement some sort of user fee, you know, to, um, on the cities that are not participating in it.
And I think some, uh, what some of the other cities held out on is because they don't have a site.
Right.
Whereas like Centerton and Rogers and Siloan do.
Right, and I think, uh, you know, and we had talked about this too, last time, Councilman, um, Kellner, um, Bendville went through the premise that their citizens, because they have curbside pickup of their bulky items, that their citizens were not utilizing the program as much as what we were explaining to them, and so we tracked it extremely, um, tightly all last year, and so I think that that assisted in them understanding that their citizens are, do value this program, um, as much as all the other citizens in the county do, so uh, I think you, you know, you saw, um, Mayor Orman was one of the early, um, you know, signatures on that document. Um, so they, they have obviously decided that, that they are going to support this program moving.
Does kind of make it hard to track by zip code, because we have a lot.
Yeah, exactly, so that, and that's a good.
Talked about that last time, though, getting a system that you could.
That would be.
The zip code, you couldn't.
Yeah, we talked about this in the meeting, the two things we asked for, Bendville, obviously, they're not gonna get penalized because they support a lot of the funding, but if it were one of us, I'm sure we would, and then two, we asked for a more strict policy and how they're I mean, if they were gonna get to sit out last year, how would we be able to identify Bendville or Centerton residents to your?
And I just, I just wanna ask a clarification, this is the fee we've paid every year since two thousand five, they're just basically increasing from fifty cents to one dollar. It's nothing to do with the special fee, they're doing away with it, that we, that we did contribute to last year.
This resolution is to increase the fee.
Yeah, it's, and, and participate, we need interlocal agreement. It just participated, it just went up a dollar, their costs went up, and, and, like I said, she, since oh five.
And, but the reason I wanted to bring up the special waste drop-off program is, there will not be, because of this agreement, there would not be the district coming back to you year after year, asking for some sort of special contribution, it, this would replace that, um, you know, request in the future.
You know, tell us why we're increasing the fee, I know we haven't done it forever, but I, that's really not a, a, a reason, like, why?
So, the district, um, I, I don't know how much you know about, uh, the district's finances, we, the district is a government agency established by the legislature with basically no funding mechanism, other than a, uh, fee that we could charge on waste or fund from our, you know, that's generated within our district. Um, unfortunately, the law was changed in two thousand eleven to make it, um, to change that fee, basically, uh, make it a burden on districts that don't have a landfill, the landfill within their own district, that that the district receiving the waste could also take half of the fee. So we have been under a lawsuit for years, but currently under another lawsuit, um, that's being appealed to the Supreme Court right now. Um, that basically fighting for our citizens to get the benefit of the fees that our citizens pay. Um, so right now, that's the reason for the last five years, the district has been under half fees. And so we have not been able to fund, um, the special waste program through district funds. And so what the board decided, it honestly came down to a decision by the district board, which is the mayor's and the, um, you know, representatives of all, any city that's over two thousand population. Um, there was a discussion about that we can either recommend increasing the fee to the members, or we can abolish the program. That's the only two options that we have. So.
Really, I just, in this economy, you know, it's like everybody's raising their prices. We're gonna raise our prices and, and I know it's fifty cents, but fifty cents is still, I mean, um.
Okay, yes, definitely. Have a hard time with that. One thing I will say to point out to you, because you, you know, it, like you, I know it does not apply to the cities that did not participate in the special funding last year, you know, the special contribution. It'll actually be a lower cost to the city of Centerton and, and any city that participated last year in the special funding, because overall, um, you paid, you know, uh, more per, um, citizen last year than you would pay that, you know, in the future years between the fifty cent per person, normal local member contribution and the sixty-seven cent per person fee that you paid for the special contribution. So it's actually, so that was like a dollar seventeen. Am I getting that math right? A dollar seventeen per person combined, combined those two contributions that you made last year, and this would lower that then to just a dollar this year. So overall, it's a reduction from last year what the city would pay, but you're saying it is, you know, that that special contribution had a sunset, you know, which was December thirty-first, and this would not have a, a sunset.
Just one question I've got for you. I know that I went to drop off some cardboard
Yes.
uh, this weekend and this, uh, bulk item was still open, but, and there was two trailers out for cardboard and they were both full. Is there not someone there on site that can change those out during the weekends while the bulk is open?
There is not. But that's why we do put out a spare trailer when we, so we keep a trailer back, um, all day Saturday, basically, even if those two out front fill up. We keep a spare bag so that we can pull it out at the end of the day, because we don't actually process those trailers any longer. The city of Rogers Recycling Center, um, empties those trailers and processes them for us. And so the, for, our driver drives, you know, Monday through Friday, because that's when Rogers is able to empty the trailers. And so on Saturdays, we don't, you know, he's not working. And so we, we kind of, you know, cut me a whole extra trailer to try to get us.
Thought if I got there about noon on Saturday, I would, it would be full, but they were full.
Oh, I'm telling you, after Christmas, it, it was, you know, a ridiculous amount, which is good. I'm glad people are utilizing the program, but it was, it was a massive amount of material. So yes, that, that is true. I'm sorry about that, because it does, and pretty well, he hasn't, it does.
It's his fault.
It's his fault. He brought too much material.
I, I believe Chris will have a question.
I just want to understand, does the city pay for this? Or does it come out of the city tax?
Comes out of our cost.
No, general fund is based on population.
Yes.
Anybody got any more questions for Wendy? Counselor?
I have mentioned one more thing, sir. Absolutely. You may have already noticed it, but, um, this, the agreement has been signed by nine of the member entities so far. Um, with Centerton, obviously you're reviewing it tonight. Raven and Lowell have not signed on to that yet. Um, and I have requested meetings with their mayors. They, they've just responded not at all about this. And so I just wanted you to know kind of where we're at overall on the, the full agreement with the other two cities that are still pending. Okay, sorry.
Resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash zero one, a resolution proven in inter-agency agreement with numbers contribution, uh, contributions and operations special programs between the city of Centerton and the Benton County Solid Waste Districts.
Somebody make motion to adopt Resolution two zero two three dash zero one.
I'm in.
Second. And a second. Roll call, Nicole.
Amy Rosette.
Yes.
Justin Cowver.
Yes.
Keep thinking about them.
Yes, ma'am.
Josie Reed.
Yes.
Darren Warren.
Yes.
All right. If you can resend me the link, I'll sign it.
Okay, I will.
I can't find it in there, right?
Oh, no, no.
Changed, but send it outside.
I will. Thank you all so, so so much.
Carl's up next. He wants to talk about a couple of bank accounts. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero two.
What's it is?
This is the, uh, this is a creation of a public safety equipment account, R dot grant account, and well, then closing.
Well, the one, open two bank accounts are both for grant funds that we should be receiving shortly, one for police equipment and one is for the R dot grant. Um, I think the one that we want to close is the fireman's pension.
Yes.
One, because we just finished transferring the last of those assets to Loffee based upon the fireman's pension board's desire to join Loffee.
Hey, question on grants real quick. I noticed you mentioned last time, do, do we have a way to pull out the grants we've requested the last two years? And where we're tracking, like, did we get it? Did we not? When should we hear back? So we can kind of?
I've got on my list of things to do. You've asked, I'd pull up the, because every one, every time we apply for a grant, we got resolution.
But I might as well start like, okay, so we fly like, it'd be great to have a tracker, like, okay, what's out there? What's left to collect? What do we have a shot at?
You calculated if we collect. Right?
That's where your, that's where your problem arises, that you don't create a separate. A grant is dumped in with.
Two, right on your first two cells right there.
It gets, it gets dumped in the general funds and it's gotta be tracked through some sort of a project number. It's somebody just put a project number in.
Thank you for being a.
Doesn't. You get there. So that's, that's the whole point is to separate these funds so that when you guys have a question, you get a report every month that tells you exactly what we spent and what's left in that fund. So.
Any more questions, Carl?
It says two bank accounts.
They're opening three and closing one.
Perfect. Thank you for being adequate. You just look like you're just right.
Resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash zero two, a resolution authorized establishment of new bank accounts at First National Bank of NWA. Public safety equipped grant account, R dot grant account, and McKissick Trail Grant Account. To designate individuals authorized to perform various actions on behalf of the city of Centerton with regard to said account and for other purposes.
Somebody make motion to adopt the, uh, Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero two.
I'm in.
Second.
I have a second. Roll call.
Darren Warren.
Yes.
Yes.
You thinking about them?
Yes, ma'am.
Justin Cowver.
Yes.
Amy Rosette.
Yes.
All right, I'm gonna call Captain Kelly up for this next one. This is Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero three. Uh, this is, uh, software for the shelter. He'll, he'll give you a brief overview. Brief overview.
So I did a little bit of research on software. It's kind of part of the update. I wanted to give you all as, uh, from previous council meeting. Um, we tried Shelter Love, tried it for a few weeks, um, have this company come in and do it then. Um, ultimately, this company was a little bit more expensive, but the reason why, why it is, um, it's customizable and, and, and it's more of a working program rather than just here you go. Not by anything for your agency. It's just what we have. That's kind of what Shelter Love had. Now each have their own benefits, pros and cons, but the system here is still relatively inexpensive. Um, it's still really a month a month. We have a startup fee for them to have their engineers and stuff, um, build the program for what we want for our city. Um, but after that, I think it's like a hundred and fifty a month is what, um, they're agreed to do for us with our amount of users that we have. Um, if we decide that we need to add things or change things as we go, as long as we don't go over five hours of IT work, it's included in this.
Easily accessible for you.
Yeah, so far, I mean, I went back and forth with him, which, you know, I mean, it's hard to, hard to say how it will be after you go into the contract with him, but he's been real responsive. I've actually been talking to one of the owners back and forth with the company and stuff. They seem to be, um, one thing I do like is they have other, you know, their program for other shelters. And also it was really cool to, on the demos, they were actually able to demo an actual working shelter with this data and, you know, how it can be utilized. Um, and there was five or six options that I wanted to add, and they said that's all they, they can do. So I mentioned, you know, like a bar, uh, barcode scanning before. That wasn't something they were able to do. So we compromised. They're able to do QR codes. So you can still scan it with any camera, any device that has a camera. Um, so the animal would have its own, uh, QR code. That would be all this profile would come up. You just scan it and you can go on and add your notes and everything. Pretty much you can add almost any, any boxes or any details you want to add in that profile. Um, you do have the unique identifier number, um, you know, microchip number, anything that you have on that. Stay with that, with that pet. So, you know, if it gets out, months from now, comes back, we would have its data to, for who the owner is or any fact, versus right now, we're literally going through, you know, paper files, trying to figure out what's what. So, um, I like the unique identifier, um, aspect of it. And, um, you know, they're just, the only thing that I'm, that I'm hoping they can do is want to get it toward the system. Now auto every so often will, will actually put it to like Pet Finder and other, other apps out there automatically. Um, so hopefully that's something we can do. Shelter Love does offer that. So somebody working with their engineer, when we go through it, see if we can get that. Um, after our holding period, it will automatically show to be adoptable versus, um, just being in holding and then, you know, kind of automatically puts them over. So staff will know, um, yes, these right here are adaptable. Here's their profile. Um, and all of our checks, checklist that we want to add or as, um, you know, our feeding schedule, best schedule, all that stuff is all able to be documented on that system. So I think, um, overall, this, this is gonna do what we want to do with our documentation. Searching purposes will be much better. So you'll be able to ask, you know, a date range of, well, how many intakes and, you know, any of this from day to day to today. It would take a matter of a minute probably, going there and search that versus us trying to um, out of, and they do data migration, certain thing that we do have that are on spreadsheets that can go over on the system. They do that also in the, in the speed. So.
I have two questions. So where did we find this program? Was it recommended by best friends, by someone else? Like, how did we find this one?
Um, so. Yeah, go ahead with your.
And then the second one, if we decide to go with this one, because we're learning about software and stuff like that, what is, by the time we say yes, we sign the agreement, what is the go live date?
They told me they should be able to get ours up and going within about two weeks. Um, from us signing the answer to your first question. Um, so I reached out to, actually, it's kind of like a, I guess it's a parent company that more or less sells multiple programs. And they kind of put me in contact with, well, here's contact for Shelter Loves. Here's a contact for these folks, you know, reach out to them. Really for the specifics, they only come back with those two. There may be others out there. Um, that's the two they kick back. So that's what we did the demos with, just to see. Um, Shelter Love's not a bad program, but as far as being user friendly, something I want you to purchase it, maybe it would be more user friendly and not so like right, when you go into each tab, it definitely, it actually opens up another webpage every time. So you like sit there and you're backed up. It's hard to, to toggle back and forth.
I just want to make sure that this one was recommended by
It was, it was, uh.
Someone in the field that.
Yeah.
Is this, okay.
And that's kind of how I got put in touch with them. Um, you know, they are, uh, they're actually out of like Canada or somewhere where they're actually out of, but these web-based systems and stuff, you know, it's hard. I don't know where Shelter Loves based out of. Um, but in the, in the event that, you know, a year from now we decide that, like, this just isn't working out. The good thing is thirty days notice, you know, we can be out. Because I don't want to waste that, you know, our onboarding fee, because that is, you know, a little bit of a, a pretty good chunk of money to get started, but.
What's on boarding fee?
A thousand is what they, they ended up saying is, yeah, a thousand dollars and then one fifty a month.
That's for five users.
Yeah.
Right.
That's pretty expensive for something that works.
Yeah. Um, a lot of the other ones just charge a fee, you know, per, per adoption, not necessarily per, you know, just an overall blanket like this, but, um, and I think that they'll be able to modify this to be, you know, and if there's something else that come up that someone has a concern, we're like, wow, we didn't think of that. Can we add that? Like, they can for the, you know, I mean, within reason, they can do that stuff for us, um, and have it operational pretty quick. Um, it'd be kind of, I like that it is live working systems. You can modify it, but we're not just stuck to this is what it is. Sorry.
You have a question, I think.
Yes.
You should be able to put in red lines in the contracts that if something doesn't work out the way that it's going, you have at least fifteen percent of your onboarding. Recommendation for you.
Mr. Abel, sounds like a good thing to.
Yeah, I, I see the, the contracts attached. I don't, I don't believe I've read it yet. We can certainly do that.
You have more questions for Chris or Cat?
Thank you.
Your turn.
All right. Save Centerton Resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash zero three. Uh, in, in this, of course, will be upon my
Yeah, sure.
Uh, a resolution authorized the mayor and city clerk to execute on behalf of the city in agreement with no code systems, Winnipeg Mantabum for dragging software for the city of Centerton, Arkansas.
Somebody make motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero three.
Contingent fine.
Yeah, yeah. Depend. Did we have a motion? I didn't. You made a motion, okay.
Who whispered a motion down there?
Uh, it was Darren. Josie second? Okay. Roll call.
Amy Rosette.
Yes.
He, I'm sorry. Keep thinking about them.
Yes, ma'am.
Justin Cowver.
Yes.
Josie Reed. Yes.
Darren Warren.
Yeah.
Moving to our last resolution, is this resolution this, this Resolution twenty twenty-three? This Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero four. Uh, this.
A grant.
Yes. Yes, this is something we've been doing pretty regularly. But, uh, when I got the, the carbon grant, the five hundred thousand dollars I announced a month or two ago, uh, they've contacted us and said they still have another seven hundred thousand. They, uh, they want to re-award it. They couldn't. So what this is for, you heard Alan talk about the sidewalk.
Yes.
Yes.
So this, we estimate that this is probably about ninety thousand dollar project to put that little bit of sidewalk in.
Yeah.
Uh, a, and, and then there's another about thirty-five thousand engineer fee. So I'm asking on the grant for a hundred and twenty-five thousand, which we have to match twenty-five thousand. We have to match twenty percent of it. Uh, so if we get it, we'll be at twenty-five thousand for the whole project. And this would put a sidewalk like Alan talked about from Dogwood. Uh, a little ways that will put a crosswalk there, come up the other side of the fish hatchery up to that first entrance where we have a path that goes all the way through, which we've all, approved that several months ago.
Have, for the money that we've spent on this already, can we earmark that money towards our twenty-five?
No, this is a branded grant. No, that wouldn't even, nothing to do with that grant. Right, just for, no.
But you're saying the expense that we have.
I, I could check, but I don't, I don't think so.
It has to be within a certain time period.
Yeah, you're not gonna be able to go back and earmark that.
It's already.
For the trails also was more road improvements. So as well as things, it doubled and served the person we needed to, but it's hard to go back and say, oh, we did this too. Um, at least at that engineering cost.
You want to say that?
Yeah, I'd say the other part with like, there's going to do this is right now our engineering costs are going to, we're going to exceed the twenty-five thousand dollars, not including the actual construction. That's where having this grant, it actually reduces how much we're gonna pay to get this section into the same routes. So they're expounding on that.
Any more questions, Miss? Counselor?
Resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash zero four, a resolution expressing the willingness of the state of Centerton to utilize federal aid carbon reduction program funds.
Somebody make motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero four. We have second.
Say it.
All right, roll call.
Darren Warren.
Yes.
Josie Reed. Yes. Keep thinking about them.
Yes, ma'am.
Justin Cowver.
Yes.
Amy Rosette.
All right, Bob. You're next. Bob's gonna talk to you about the letter he sent you.
All right.
Not you, but directly.
Well, very simple. I will, uh, I'll put it this way. The question was, uh, unanimous in our vote. The rates are to be affected with the first day of February twenty twenty-three. We had a gun held to our head, the Farm Agriculture or Services Division saying that we were not in compliance with Act six oh five. But that is the reason for the increase in water rates. Now, they also dipped at us about sewer rates. But that's a whole. But that's a whole. We, we communicated, I communicate, wrote you this letter, outlined why we had to do it. Or morning, we will post on our website. An explanation for the customer and the rate study. That was used for making this recommendation.
They're posted where?
On our Senator's utility website.
You need to dig for it? Is it gonna be like on the front page or banner? Like, how are we gonna do that?
There'll be a link and then a notice to the customers. The bills that go out, starting with the cycle of first of February, first of this month, first of January. The two cycles this month will have also a notice on the bill that the rates are going up back to the first of February. As long as we could, but we got that good. Now. We do not necessarily agree with the assessment of the state water. We were not willing to incur the wrath of being a violation of six oh five.
You again, give just a quick snapshot, a quick snapshot of what, on average household, what do you think this, their water bill?
I did put it in. The average in city residential customer.
I'm just saying on the record, so it's on there.
Every hidden city residential customer uses three thousand nine hundred and sixty gallons a month. And that means then that at this rate, that that costs thirty-eight dollars and forty-one cents. Will go up to forty dollars and seventy-eight cents or three dollars and thirty-seven cents.
Minimal.
Almost. Okay. And it's. Yeah, I had last month I was here, I said around four thousand gallons. I didn't have the exact number, but Mary, we ran the numbers and that's what comes out. Thirty-nine six, I believe, and honestly, that number has been very consistent. In the thirty some years that I've been doing water in communities, whether it be very small or. And. That's what it is. Now, give me a piece of bad news. Wholesaler has indicated they're gonna raise their rates another fifteen cents per thousand. First of July. Uh, that has not been formally approved as, but uh. Malcolm says he expects that that will be, that they will do that.
Another rating.
What, what does that do?
To increase the cost of water to us by fifteen cents a thousand.
Are you gonna raise it again?
I would expect it. We will probably raise it again. Pass that fifteen cents through, you know, I mean.
No, we have absorbed the past four raises that they, times given.
No, I understand. We're, we're, but like, why, why do it twice? Why don't we just do it once?
Well, I guess I want to understand it because I thought at one point it was ten cents and then I see sixty-five cents.
Sixty-five cents versus the four phases. Whole cloud price of water over the last five years that we have absorbed. State says we, you know, don't meet the criteria, so we had to raise, you know, we were raising rates for that. Now, in addition to that, we have now received communication that our wholesaler is gonna wants to raise the rates another fifteen cents per thousand on the first of July. Not formalize that action. Malcolm was at the meeting and he. Folks, if that happens, we will pass that through. I'm sorry. We're just not gonna be absorbed. I will tell you this. That because of the growth in Northwest Arkansas. Washington County Regional Water Authority, it's having to undertake about fifty-five million dollars worth of construction over the next five to fifteen. That will have to be financed some way. You know, be through the rates that our consumers pay. We believe that we have very good plan in place to meet the needs for our customers over the coming years. The most immediate project is another three million gallon water tank on the southwest, on the southwest side of town. Which we're already, which is already funded in the rates that we currently have. But we, yeah. We understand. More customers, that means we gotta get bigger pipes put in the ground.
Multi-family, isn't it?
All right. And uh, we're gonna have to, you know, we're caught, we're continually looking at that. And uh, I don't like to pay high water rates. Make our rates. We got some cities in Northwest Arkansas that are gonna have to raise their rates significantly for the same reason. Where, where.
I guess maybe I was under the assumption that the CARES Act money, that the city.
That pays for the sewer project.
That we proved back in April, is that where you're?
Proved that in the city limits or outside?
It's in the city limits.
Cause I. I don't know. I, I know that we approved it a while back for sewer outside the city limits. I know that that was one thing that.
It's, it's, it said that it's a gravity sewer. That is inside the city limits.
No, 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 no. Used to, we used sewer as a way to get people to come into this annex into the city limits. And then on request from the Water and Sewer Commission. The commission decided we're gonna go ahead and start servicing people outside the city limits.
There's a couple of things that happened across. One is that when we pipe into the care in the treatment facility there, we picked up a customer. Simmons Foods uh, at their feed mill on the north side of Decatur. So I had to come up with an out of district rate or out of city rate. Uh, it was also about that time that it became evident in the discussions with the city of Bentonville, which is annexed a very large area to the meeting south city. Really wasn't particularly interested in bringing the sewer, so we just said, you know, we, we have the exclusive right to sell the water. Then we're gonna put sewer in. We already have a plan to cover that.
My deal is on adding to the, those residents. Centerton's got it. Come into the city of Centerton and we'll service you.
Well, that's, that's pretty well, what we are in the sewer part. Right, we don't, we don't serve people outside city limits unless they're close enough to the line. You know, if they're at a certain distance of it, well, you have to. But we don't advertise service people. We've got, I don't think, I don't think we've got over eight customers out inside the city limits. And this decated, the one Robert was just talking about. When there were the, the dog food plant over, or Simmons, that was probably the best of Decatur. You gotta remember our contract with Decatur, and so. You let them go into our sewer. No, that's the only, outside city limits.
Yeah, but we're, you know, we try very hard to encourage these people, you know, people who want some, that bit where it to annex it.
If they want, if they want to serve, they can, you know, like that.
But if they don't, then we can get charged.
They have a sewer right outside the city limits, but that's the one.
We're, you know, uh. We'll, you know. We are committed to uh, for some matching money to grant we got from the county. A rural water extension to close a bunch of net ends. And add about hopefully at least twenty-five customers. And uh, sometime over the year and a half, so we'll get that project up and running. I do expect, that water rate, I do expect that we will. I'm not sure if we have this, you know, not this, this one. Next month, we'll get back our new capacity, sewer capacity fee. So that we can undertake construction of four projects within the city to improve the sewer capacity of our lines uh, coming down. Coming down the, the old railroad right away, that may, to Fourteenth Street and then over and then the Alamo.
I ask a question. So with the amount of growth that we see here in Centerton with specifically medium to high density houses developments going in. How do we see that affecting our water and sewer over the next couple of years?
About like building the same number of single family houses. I mean, we're growing, we have been growing at nine percent a year for seven years.
You put it on the developers.
What?
How, how, how can you, I mean.
How can you plan for that?
That's not, yeah, what I said.
Is there a way that maybe, you know, we can work with developers that are coming in to help offset some?
What the capacity fees are for, that you all instituted last year. That's how we get the money. We collected.
So then what else can, is there anything else that we can do then? Yeah, instead of passing them along to the, to the consumer.
That's what the, the capacity fee, the law says we can put in a capacity, you can approve a set of capacity. And we did. Okay, we're gonna add an additional sewer capacity fee to cover the additional sewer. As we identify more projects, we'll be coming back in asking for more sewer capacity fees. We've collected over three million dollars since those capacity fees went in January, a year ago.
What if we increase even more? I'm just saying. Is it gonna slow down the development center because we got most of the land left? Like, what, what are your thoughts there? I mean, is it gonna slow down the development if we increase to the capacity fees? I'm pretty sure they're knocking on the door all day long. So like, what, what's the, what's the con to adding more of these capacity fees? And taking more off of our citizens that already live here? Just asking.
Well, first of all. Well, you gotta be able to prove that you need additional capacity. And then, you know, and what that cost would be to add that capacity. You know, what the contribution would be then for the new, you know, for those develop, for also.
Is there, I mean, do you need a survival option? Like, if, if we're gonna pass on fifteen cents and do a water rate increase, which I think is merited, Melvin, I, I agree. What options are out there? So the citizens don't have to pay for all of it.
Well, like I said, we've got these four projects, these four sewer projects. The consultant should give us a report next, you know, for our action next month. Uh, for new, you know, additional sewer capacity fee that will come back to you to institute. But the sewer capacity fee is based on your projected full cost. What, what we have for our, our sewer capacity that we have existing are for the truck lines for sewer and the developmental areas. Okay. Uh, inside the subdivisions and so forth, that gets taken care of. But we've already, we're already collecting capacity fees handling new growth.
Can we, can we not just increase but double them on? I'm, I don't know. I'm just trying to think how you fund it without.
Increase it, you have an increase in the cost of construction.
I mean.
Well, thanks.
I'd rather the citizens not pay for it and, and try to find a way to have developers fund it.
It's on usage.
Well, yeah, yeah, I, I get that. So the cost of constructions continue to go.
It's a, you know, it's, it's, it's an ongoing process that we try to do, yeah.
I just said bring all solutions, like happy to talk through them. I mean, instead of just passing them on to citizens, what other options are available? I mean, even, even if the idea's not gonna work, let's just throw them out there. Like, hey, here's something we could do, like, let's.
You know, we got engineers working for us all the time. They're all.
Are they trying to find ways to save our citizens money and look for other ways to offset that?
The goal is to make sure that we are able to deliver water and sewer services. Okay, and that we have capacity to do that. If they identify a shortfall, then we develop projects. The project then gets to convert it a capacity fee, a review for a capacity fee, and we start collecting. Uh, but it's very hard for us to say, other than the truck lines that we know that we're gonna have to do. You know, we've already got them capitalized to the capacity fee. And uh. I'm not sure, you know, where the development is gonna be in the next five years. Lerox says he wants twenty years.
I understand the concern about passing it on to, to. But you need to, you need to stop and remember that we haven't had a rate increase in water in how long? Five years in, in the last five years, we built a nine million dollar tower over here and we're in the process of building the thirteen million dollar tower over there. Plus, we've had several other multi-million dollar things and, and clean, smaller projects, and none of that's been passed on.
Totally understand. I'm just, I'm just trying to think creatively.
You can't, you can't keep doing stuff like that and never passing it on.
I will, I will have to say this, folks. I know everybody says, oh, it's the cost of water, the cost of sewer. Folks, water is the most precious commodity that we have. So we destroy it every time we flush the toilet.
And store it.
Okay. Water will become the most, probably the most expensive single item in our lifetime. And if you don't think water's important, I'll ask you to drive a few miles over to Oklahoma. Because from that line west, every drop of water that's taken off the service or out of the ground is regulated, highly regulated. And there ain't very much over there. And, yeah. In nineteen, in in nineteen ninety-six. They had a community in South Texas. That had arsenic in their public water supply. And the state of Texas tried to get the private owner to fix the problem. When they wouldn't. Working with the state regulator, we figured out a buyout price. And we, I loaned the money to buy that water system. And the state gave you money to get rid of the arsenic. The average. Average income level in that community was about sixty-five percent of the poverty line. And what was their water bill? Fifty dollars a month.
Sounds like Cave Springs.
But they paid for the glass. I think that's, you know, I wanna give it to us as cheap as possible, we'll explore every opportunity. Buy water and sewer at the least cost. But I would, yeah, but remember. Every city in Northwest Arkansas is facing the same issue. It's gonna cost them a lot of money.
Carly, do you have a question?
But we keep building car washes.
I mean, I get, I get real, car wash is driving.
I just wanna say a few things. Uh, first of all, I did reach out to Bob and, and they are gonna, my coffee to mayor, they are gonna be there and. Over this with the citizens. But I, I, I just wanted to write a couple of, of observations. You know, I wanna work with the water sewer commission, I think, you know, we worked good against the city and the commission. I, I mean, I do have some concerns with the rate hike. A lot of it's all based around X six oh five and the municipal executive trying to repeal that. And I did ask, you know, if we wait until we see what exit, because that's what's regulating. Six oh five's telling you, hey, you gotta do this, 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 and this, and if they repeal it, then do we get to?
No, thank, I don't, I don't think we want to, we don't need to repeal that.
I don't know, I'm just telling you what.
Some, needs some adjustments and tweaks.
Yeah, and then back, back to what she was trying, or asking, I, I, is, it sounds like to me that sixty-five cents, we're trying to collect the four that you absorbed. Plus the ten cents. That's what it sounds like, because, you know, like she said, you only, it only went up ten cents, but we're gonna charge the citizen sixty-five. And, you know, I mean, you know, water, and I'm not telling these guys nothing, water's a hot subject. We're all gonna catch. Yeah, and, and I agree, sixty-five cents, you know, I use two thousand gallons of water, it'd be a dollar thirty for this, but this, this is a hot subject. And I look, I look at your ratios, they look good, I'm not a math guy, but, you know, when we, you know, we financed the water tower in April. You know, Jill sat right here, told the council, there won't be no rate decrease, it's in the minutes. We gave you the one point three million, like he said, you know, because Frank kept saying, we don't do it, we're gonna raise your rates, okay? Rate increase, sewer now, water, uh, uh, anyway.
But we're gonna raise the sewer rates too.
Yeah, it's in your letter, we're going.
Yeah, I would expect, and I probably will, because the state said we're deficient.
And, and in fact, and I'm not trying to, I just wanna say.
That's a good point.
But, but then he also, or he, Justin also said, he was talking about impact fee, we just implemented those. You know, and that helped absorb some of this, so.
We're going back to the pot.
Yeah, so, anyway, I, I just, I, I really wish, you know, your meeting next week, I wish you, you, you would wait a couple of months till we see what six oh five does, but that's just my personal request, I don't have no authority.
I think six oh five has anything to do with.
Well, you're telling this state, six oh five.
No, I think what we're saying is the, the six oh five's triggering it, but that doesn't, that doesn't decide whether we need to pay a increase or not, we hadn't, we haven't increased in over five years.
I know, but he.
Spent thirty million dollars out there, you, you're talking about a, a sixty-five percent of whatever, a sixty-five cent, or. That's a drop in. Takes to do this.
I didn't, I didn't wanna argue, I just wanted to say my points.
Yeah, yeah, I am.
It's great that we're having discussions because we need to work together and I would love to see the, the commission bring solutions to us. Like, hey, this is what we've come up with, we've got A, B, and C that we could do to offset these prices. Uh, I think that would be a good. And, and real quick, just real quick, when you first came to the podium, you said basically you didn't have a choice, you had a gun to your head to.
That's exactly.
Because of the state of not meeting the criteria from six oh five.
So I'd be down this road, we were the first, well, before I was here, we were the first town to. Go through the X six oh five gemination. And. I will tell you that I had discussions with, I don't even remember his name down there, but. The way they do this is like voodoo accounting.
Oh, yeah.
It's not even close. When I, when I first, when I first, when I first heard about this, I was opposed, I will tell you, I, I didn't agree with it. But I listened to what they've had to say. Yeah, the only thing that I would have done different in this whole thing, I'm just, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm a backseat driver now.
Financial guy too.
The only thing that I would have done differently was I would. An ordinance or something in place that says every time they raise their rates.
Six oh five says you have to do a rate study.
Well, you have to rate study every five years, right?
Oh, no.
Well, but can't you put something in the ordinance that says. When the Washington water, or whoever. When they raise their costs to you.
That in the past, guess what we got? Council threatens. We'll raise that rate, so.
What is that? Cause that'd be a while.
But you gotta remember one, you had the right to raise those rates.
So just to be on that, we did that in gravity. We, we put something in place that says every time two ton raises our rates, we're gonna pass that cost along.
Well, that's gotta pass muster with the.
Well, I don't know, they haven't said.
That do though, just, I mean, what's, what's the point of that?
So you, so what happens is, they raised their rates in two thousand nineteen, you passed the ten cents along, and then in two thousand twenty-one, you pass along.
Not a big amount at one time.
You don't get to a point where you have to pass.
I get it.
Here's, here's my suggestion. Saturday, when you come and talk to, coffee with the mayor, you don't mention sixty-five cents. You mentioned ninety cents, because right there, it's ninety cents between now or February first and July.
Eighty cents, wasn't it?
No, it's, it's sixty-five, fifteen, and ten, that's ninety cents.
Six five and fifteen is eighty cents.
Let's send, send more.
So you're looking at ninety cents.
About sixty-five and fifteen.
But then there's another ten cents coming.
We're not out of the, we're not out of the gun to do the sewer.
But, but it's better to overprom or under.
I understand, but, I mean, you're, you're showing it here. So I'm saying, you know, if, if you tell the people sixty-five cents, and then July comes along, you say fifteen cents, they're gonna say, wait a minute. You said sixty-five cents, you didn't say eighty cents, and then ten cents comes along right behind that. Telling you, you guys are gonna get blown up.
And what happens?
If it's actually ninety cents in the next six, seven months, it needs to be ninety cents. No, I'm, I'm just saying.
I understand what you're saying.
I understand what you're saying, that we're, you said again.
It matters if you, if you say we're gonna raise it one time ninety cents, if you go raise it three times.
I, I mean, you understand exactly where I'm going, because if you say sixty-five cents, and then you come back in June or July. And say another fifteen cents, they're gonna say, wait a minute. I'm almost saying we just go ahead.
They're gonna call the whole council.
I'm just, I'm, I'm like.
Now, under promise.
We're under pressure to get those, these four sewer projects done too.
His point, it looks like we're absorbing all this for if they didn't pass it along.
We're already talking.
I will. How do you know for a fact it's gonna be ninety cents until it happens?
Or caution in the, in the community.
Expected.
I would say it's gonna go up sixty-five cents, it may go up another twenty-five cents, subject to.
Sixty-five cents. Additional fees coming.
I'm, I have a good presentation.
Oh, hell, you know.
Tuesday morning, eight thirty.
Break some chances, go on.
Okay, I have one more question. Ask, so, if, if we ask Bob. About how we can. Reliate or make the citizens less subject.
Offset.
Offset. Why don't we make contract reports sideways? Sidewalks and, just inside the development, but on the.
I agree, and.
They do that in California.
Because what's gonna happen is.
We're gonna pay for it.
Because it's prohibited for the city to put sidewalks everywhere, too expensive, by law.
Why aren't we doing that, I guess?
Or adjacent street approvals.
You can't just keep putting sidewalks in. A hundred thousand, it's a hundred thousand dollars for that little.
That's an extraordinary.
But, so. But, but if you make the contract. Contract can come for it, he's gonna pass it along and the cost of his house, which is gonna end up being a thousand dollars maybe to a house to a. And it's gonna raise that person's mortgage payment by ten dollars a month. And that's gonna be immaterial.
From the mayor, bringing, bringing us an update to the subdivision code that requires adjacent street approvals.
They do that, that, that's what we should.
They, they do it now.
They do, adjacent street.
Not paying for this.
Let's table that at.
Thank you, that's the money, guys.
We'll be back.
What she's zipped on.
What we need to do, you know. Oh, I've heard some good suggestions. Why don't y'all write out your suggestions, submit them to us where we can study them also.
I think that's also what we're doing right now, is from you.
Dear say, and what we've done from the past.
But you're the experts, Melvin, we need your ideas.
That's your commission, you're.
You're the experts.
You bring them to us.
It's a suggestion. No more than that, don't get me that crap.
You need a joint working session? Need a joint working session?
We're having one this month.
I think that's a good.
About between council and water.
That'll come next.
We did it first.
We've got a big, we've got a lot of agenda in the working session.
I mean, we shouldn't have two meetings for this agenda alone, let's be honest, instead of.
Yeah, I'm ready to move it on.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys ready to move?
All right, she's dipped on.
All right, next. Next on the agenda. Kelly spoke last month about wanting to hire a clerk to put up the shelter. We want to bring that to you to approve that position. We have motion to approve it, we have second?
Yes, second.
Second, any discussion, all in favor?
Do you have someone in mind?
Yes.
Someone that showed interest. Okay.
Um, we'll post internal, then go external, but we have had a lot of. I think we have eighty-four-ish applicants for the ACO spot. Hopefully, just get moving on interviews and all that too, so.
Yeah, okay.
We're getting applications for those.
Okay.
You can call us quite a bit, and. By next meeting, I'll have, I think, define, should have the policy come through, drift away, then, um. Counsel to look at volunteer waiver, and we've been taking. To volunteer, once we get all that pushed through, then we'll start calling those folks.
Second.
Next on the agenda is, uh, and this is a budget item, to purchase a twenty twenty-three Dodge Ram fifteen hundred for the public works department. Before you make a motion or, I wanna say good job to Anthony, because. We were buying his superior and he, he called the state. And was able to get this one about twelve thousand dollars cheap, well, since forty-five, eight forty, we're.
Not a boy, Anthony did some.
And we're getting it for thirty-four, four forty-six, that's why you don't have an ordinance, because it's under thirty-five thousand.
Wow, that's great.
Good job.
Any questions on this?
Negotiating.
It doesn't have tires.
I was better ready to get a Ford at fifty-one.
Call, call these people.
Great idea.
I called, and I actually had to call him to confirm that he was a mess with me at that price.
So the commission shit comes out. It isn't ever maxi. And hey, Anthony, does it have tires, wheels, and windows?
Yes, actually.
It does not have tires.
Any discussion on this?
No, well, let's move on.
Make a motion to approve it.
Make a motion and prove it.
We have second, we got a motion from Justin, did you get that? Made a motion to approve the trial, we got second? Second for Keith, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, next Carl's up, he asked to change some position titles in his department, go ahead and tell him. Here it, here it is on screen. Okay. Well, he likes, he likes to come up there. This is your last call, last time.
It's a financial.
It's six in the morning.
The assistant, I want to change the finance manager position, the assistant finance director, there's no increase in pay. And the assistant finance director, no longer gets paid.
Didn't Sherry sorry?
What?
Didn't Sherry sorry?
She's exempt or some, I don't know what that's all about.
She's not, she's not, she's, she still gets.
You won't now, though, you won't now.
And she's okay with that.
Make a motion to approve that.
Second.
Titles?
Second.
Yes.
You wanna tell her, he's approved?
Second is I wanna change the billing clerk. Who, the senior finance, what did I call it?
Natural, senior financial specialist.
Specialist, yes, sorry. A good long night. Um.
The other one's.
That is, she'll be moved up, that position, the third one is the junior finance specialist, and I hired her. Saturday.
Start next.
Her name is, what's her name?
Sandra Carl. Sandra double.
Cherry, Sharon Duck.
I don't remember.
Is she gonna be, is she gonna be the one that sits where Nicole?
She is gonna be the one who sits for the policy, very professional, showed up to interview.
Nicola can sit.
Outside. She said we're out. I'm with people. Okay.
Isn't this just like really good, like a progression, like a growth for no one's offense?
That's all it is.
I.
I moved upstairs.
Motion to, uh.
Title changes.
Reposition title changes.
Do we have second? All in favor? Anyone opposed? All right.
That, let's go.
I, I'll do the talking for him, so, uh, he has come to me, wants to surplus some bunker gear. And this is the gear he wants, the brand number and serial numbers, he's gonna destroy it.
Great, out of date.
We're out of date.
Well, can it, can it be, I mean, is it?
No, it's out of date, there's expiration dates, I see.
You're donating something that's out of date.
It's out of service.
Halloween costume, I don't.
Make a motion to allow us to surplus this stuff?
Make a motion to surplus the bunker.
Second?
Second.
Favor? Posed. All right, and, and I'm not gonna spend no time on this, but this next thing is a concept we're looking at at the old city hall, just look at your leader and I'll talk about.
Sarah did this?
Sarah, she's not here, is she? Take a look at this and I'll, I'll, I'll talk about this in our next meeting.
Or coffee's the mayor.
Wow.
Or, this is this.
Several person right there?
Uh, I don't know.
That chair, or, or there.
Crystal Bridges or?
No, this is our old city hall.
Oh, coffee shop.
Coffee shop, and then a couple offices in there, yes.
And everybody left when they're talking about the library. When they're talking about the library.
It's in here, right there.
This is cool.
You got a bar?
Uh, not that you know about.
Shows the layout, what rooms, the very first one that shows the layout of the rooms.
So here, here's the layout, here's where you first walk in. You know, I, I think.
Who's doing the control?
Nobody's doing anything. It's just a concept. We're just brainstorming. For, for now, but we wanna, we wanna do something with that building and we wanted to get that conversation started.
Is this all with the?